Call of the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two City Council Meeting Order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir.
Assume the attitude of prayer. Our Father God, we come once again to say thank you that we live in a city where we're able to exercise the rights of all citizens, and we come now asking you to lead us, guide us, and direct us in the way that you have us to go, that all that we shall say and do will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Blessed now, Hail the Father, this mayor, these commissioners, if we continue to be the servants of the citizens of Apopka, and bless all those that are in our presence tonight in thy Son Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day. On May eighteenth, nineteen seventeen, Congress passed the Selective Service Act, which gave the President the power to draft soldiers. The U.S. only had one hundred thousand soldiers to send to Europe to help the Allies during World War I. To remedy this situation, Wilson pushed the government to adopt military consciption, which he argued was the most democratic form of enlistment. To that end, Congress passed the Selective Service Act, which was Wilson's signed into law on May eighteenth, nineteen seventeen. The Act required that all men in the U.S. between the ages of twenty-one and thirty to register for military service. Within a few months, some ten million men across the country had registered in response to the military draft. By the end of World War I, in November of nineteen eighteen, some twenty-four million men had registered under the Selective Service Act. Of the approximate four point eight million Americans who eventually served in the war, roughly half had been drafted. Through the years, the requirement of selective service has been revised. Currently, men are required to register with the Selective Service System within thirty days of their eighteenth birthday. Fact of the day.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Minutes? I know we had a couple of corrections. With those corrections, motion to approve the minutes?
I just have one question and just want to get some clarity on the minutes, and that is that I've noticed, and also I was contacted by a constituent, that we are no longer summarizing public comments, and we had been doing it regularly, and all of a sudden, we're not doing it. So I'd like to refer to something, a policy change, where is it that we, why we no longer are summarizing our public comments?
There's no policy change. As I've stated, minutes are not a verbatim transcript of the hearings, of the meetings. So therefore, brief summary describing what occurred, that's basically the gist of minutes. The way that these minutes are transcribed now, that are prepared now, and the identifying of the person who spoke at the, at public comment as someone who spoke is consistent with other jurisdictions. So it's, if you're going to institute a policy to have more detailed, if you're looking at managing how the minutes are to be provided and the content of the minutes, then it's for the board to dictate down to staff if you want to implement a policy for what you want to see or how you want to see the minutes prepared. Minutes are just simply minutes reflecting the events of the meeting, but are not a verbatim transcript of the meeting.
No, but we have been consistently summarizing our public comments, and all of a sudden, they, we are not doing that. And so when I did ask our city clerk at what direction or who directed that we no longer do that, and obviously, the direction came from you.
Now, I don't have authority to give direction, nor do I give direction.
How did we just not?
I, I give counsel, but it is not the city attorney's position to give direction to staff. I do not have that authority, nor will I execute, exercise that authority.
All right, so you counseled, did you counsel the city clerk?
I advised the clerk that verbatim, that minutes do not constitute a verbatim transcript of the events of the meeting.
But a summary, can they continue to do a summary?
I am not, I do not have the authority to direct the clerk to do a summary or to do anything. I am merely, I merely advise, that is the authority I have.
Okay. Attorney.
I did not direct the clerk, I did not order the clerk.
Is that what you want?
I would like to have a summary of the public comments because when there's a public records request, they want to also see and review what the public comments were. They don't have to be verbatim, but a summary of it. How are we now referring our constituents, because that's who we work for and that's who we have to answer to? When they say, where are the public comments? I saw that, you know, John Smith was there, and, you know, so-and-so was there. Where can I find what their public comments?
Well, the city council meetings are both video, there's a video transcript and audio recordings of the city council meeting. The minutes are not the only place where any of what occurs at this meeting are recorded.
Well, there are some people that don't have access to that. The thing I'm trying, the point I'm trying to bring, Michael, is we were doing it consistently. It's only been in the last maybe five meetings or so that we, for some reason, what's showing up for public comment are the names of the constituents who are coming up. All I'm asking is, can we continue? Doesn't have to be verbatim, but a summary.
As I stated, if you as a council are going to direct staff to that is what you want to see in the minutes, that is the council's prerogative, it's not mine. I am not saying you cannot do it or you can. I am stating if it is your intent to direct staff, to direct the clerk, to provide a detailed summary.
I didn't say detail. You were saying it, I didn't say detail. Michael, you counseled her to stop putting the public comments?
No, 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 no. You, I did not counsel her to stop. I counseled as to what necessarily needs to be, what constitutes what is put in minutes.
Okay.
But I did not direct the clerk.
Okay, so this is what I'm asking.
Would you like to have them?
I would like to have the public comments in summary, not detailed, just in summary as we have been doing in the past.
Okay.
And as far as I've been here since two thousand fourteen, and all of a sudden, in the last five minutes.
We'll take care of that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Okay, so I'll say, I'll approve the minutes.
Actually, Mayor, it needs to be a correction on the minutes. The minutes for, on page twenty-two, reflecting the motion on ordinance twenty-nine thirty-one, reflect that it was, there was a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance at first reading and to hold over. The ordinance twenty-nine thirty-one was actually tabled, so the action for that is, should accurately reflect that there was a motion to table the minutes to continue the discussion to the May eighteenth. So that would be the accurate language when it comes to that on page twenty-two.
Okay. With those corrections, can I get a motion to approve minutes?
So can we approve them that in the future with the next council meeting, we will?
It's not.
Come back?
That's a separate, the motion on the table is to approve the minutes with the changes as requested. There is not a separate motion to direct staff to change the, or to how to.
Why do people use the word direct?
Counsel, the counsel directs the staff, the staff works at discretion to counsel, and if the, it is the council's policy to request that you wish to have these summarized in the minutes, then let there be a direction. Now, that's not what's on the table for the vote. The only motion that's right now on the, on the table for vote is the approval of the minutes.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the minutes of May fourth.
With the necessary correction.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Second.
Second by, so we got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Okay. Next up, we have a proclamation, and honored to be a part of this. It's the Florida Emancipation Day Proclamation, and it reads as stated, "Whereas the city of Apopka recognizes that the observance of the end of slavery is part of the heritage and history of the United States and the state of Florida, and whereas as a governmental body, the city council opposes and rejects any form of oppression and supports residents and organizations working to achieve genuine equality and protection of human rights for everyone, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on September twenty-second, eighteen sixty-two, announcing that on the first day of January, eighteen sixty-three, all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall be in rebellion against the United States, shall be then, thereforward, and forever free, and whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, federal authorities arrived in Galveston, Texas, and informed slaves that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were now free, and whereas June nineteenth, or June nineteenth, or Juneteenth, has been commonly recognized and celebrated as the day that slavery ended in the United States, and whereas Emancipation Day in Florida is traditionally celebrated on May twentieth to recognize the emancipation of slaves as proclaimed by General Edward M. McCook from the steps of the Knott House in Tallahassee on May twentieth, eighteen sixty-five, effectively ending slavery in the state of Florida, eleven days after the end of the Civil War and two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was first issued by President Abraham Lincoln. And whereas a result, many Floridians celebrate May twentieth as Emancipation Day in Florida, and whereas in recognition of Florida's unique history with respect to the emancipation of slaves, the city council commemorates the announcement of the abolition of slavery and recognizes the significant contribution of African-Americans to the state and our nation. Now, therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby recognize May twentieth as Florida Emancipation Day in the City of Apopka, and encourages all citizens to recognize May twentieth, twenty, twenty-two, as Florida's Emancipation Day in the City of Apopka.
Okay.
All right. Next up, we got the water safety class presentation. Maynard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. When I came to the City of Apopka, one of the things I was most excited about in taking over Camp Weewa was the fact that we had finally, in the city, an Olympic-sized swimming pool. I wanted to find ways to utilize that pool to help as many people as I could, and my history is not only in camping and education, but it's in aquatics. The biggest pet peeve I've had in my life is unnecessary drownings and accidental drownings, and it's been a pet peeve of my family for the longest time, and when I saw that pool, I saw an opportunity for us to do something about it, and with your help, Mr. Mayor, with the fire department, with Jose and from the Live for Bree Foundation, we were able to start our free water safety classes out of Camp Weewa.
My name is Jose Inzalas. For those who don't know me, I've been in the city for twelve years, I'm part of the, one of the members of the law enforcement here, part of Apopka Police Department. I'm also the vice president of the Live for Bree Foundation, nonprofit foundation, and also the Bree Society's dad. So it's very, very important to me that I'm here. It's one of the first time actually addressing and being here, talking about Bree. One of the things, real quick, because I can talk forever about this stuff, and so I don't want anybody to fall asleep, but I just want to say some of the drowning statistics and put things in perspective a little bit. In the U.S., drowning takes average, or ten kids die or drown every day. That's thirty-five to four thousand lives. Just to put things a little bit in perspective, that's ten buses full of kids every year. So it is a big issue, it is a big problem. It is the leading cause of unintentional injury-related death for children between one and four, and of course, month, August, oh, I'm sorry, May, June, July, August being the worst month just because of the summer. I know, I was doing a little bit of research, I know in past year, there's a forty-two percent increase in drownings with kids here in Florida alone. Sometimes in two thousand and nine, we were the leading state, passing, surpassing Texas, and of course, we can fit two to three times in Texas, Texas being the second one. So again, it is, it is a huge issue. My wife asked me why the big increase. I do believe it's because of COVID, people started not allowing kids or training start, then he start training kids, or that stopped, in other words. So again, one of my biggest things, it's one of the biggest things that Live for Bree provides, it's, well, it has one mission, that's to save lives through education. We actually sponsor kids, we sponsor kids all the way from Texas, California, of course, many, many kids here in Apopka. Some of the things that we actually can help with, it's, we, self-rescue training, counseling for families who's gone through what my family went through, and also, we help out with funeral expenses. So thank you for actually giving me the opportunity to talk to kids at Camp Weewa. I think it is a phenomenal program. I think that we had a good turnout, and also, I had a chance to not only talk to the kids and educate them, but most important, the parents. So we kind of hit to, kill to birth with one stone, kind of, so thank you.
Good evening. So as Gary and Hosean said, over the last three weeks, we've been able to actually educate forty-one kids from pre-K to second grade, but that also includes their parents, their grandparents, some of them brought older or younger siblings with them, so all those kids and those people were able to be educated throughout this class. We went over land lessons, safety around in, in the water, how to get the child to float on their back, get to the edge of the pool. We taught them CPR, first aid, not only the parents, but the kids as well, the importance of calling nine-one-one, the maintenance around your pool, the housekeeping things as well. So it was a successful three weeks. We have our next two classes, Monday and Tuesday of next week. We're going to do some pool lessons, and we're also going to do a little graduation for the kids, have some photos of the class, see some of the CPR classes that are going on, some of the talking, the land lessons, also some of the water stuff.
Look at them, how cute.
So this last one, when we went through this class, we've had intake and drownings in the community over the last couple of months, and so we decided, obviously, with the mayor and Hosean and Gary at Camp Weewa, to put this class on, but we also needed to figure out other ways to educate the community and outside. So Officer Wiggins and myself have incorporated pool safety tips within our public safety messages, you know, not just, you know, stop, drop, and roll, you know, call nine-one-one, but pool safety lessons as well. Along with that, we have a partnership with one oh three one, The Wolf, and we were able to get public safety PSAs out there for pool safety, hurricane safety, and these are being aired on the radio daily. So this is an example of one of those PSAs.
Swimming is great for people of all ages, but it's important to be safe while in and around the water. Here are some simple lifesaving water safety tips. Keep an eye on little ones and inexperienced swimmers. They are especially vulnerable and should wear a Coast Guard-approved life jacket when around the water. Only swim in designated areas supervised by lifeguards. Teach children to ask permission to go near the water. Learn to swim. Make sure everyone who uses your pool knows how to stay afloat. Enroll your children in swimming lessons at an early age. Your local parks and rec department is a great resource for budget-friendly classes. For more water safety tips from the Apopka Fire Department, visit one oh three one, the wolf Orlando dot com.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to thank, publicly thank the three gentlemen here, plus Officer Wiggins. I, you know, just right after that drowning that happened, a couple were, they were packing up boxes one night and were to leave to move to Texas the next day, and they're inside packing boxes, their, I guess, five-year-old went out on the back porch, got into the pool and drowned, and so I immediately reached out to these three gentlemen and Wiggins and said, hey, we got to do something. And within three weeks, they had a program put together on land and in the water, and so I want to thank them for, sometimes I put, put a lot of pressure on you guys to do something that really needs to be done, but you guys stepped up to the plate and made it happen. So we got forty-one, hopefully, kids that are now at least not only certified in the water, but certified on land as well, so thank you for what you did.
If I can, just kind of add to that as well, having twins that just, they just turned one, and they went through a survival training class in the water and things like that, and they can float now, it's really incredible. And a few years back, our family had, we found a two-year-old at the bottom of a pool. She was in a coma for two, two weeks, but then came out of it, and no brain damage, no nothing, but that for our family was a kind of a shot across the bow to, this needs to be taken seriously, and thank you. What a value add, because we were having to drive out of town to go get lessons, and now we have this right here in Apopka, couldn't be better. So thank you so much.
All right. Mayor, Commissioners, Robert Hippler, Information Technology Director. How are you all doing this evening?
Good.
Outstanding. This is more of a follow-up from the utility billing IVR system they were doing several months back. They were looking at implementing a system, doing a little more research on it and found a better quality overall fit that should be much better for the utility customers here. So I'm going to kind of walk you through quick, like, and then at the end, if you have any questions, I'll be welcome to answer them in any way for you. So is everybody aware of what an IVR is? Does anybody not know what that is?
Repeat that again?
IVR.
Oh, I do now.
Okay. That's fine. No, so I just want to make sure you're with me on this. So this is not new technology, it's been around for many, many years. You know, this was been kicked around through the utility billing department for several finance directors back, per se, and decided, I believe, Gladiamere has decided she wants to move forward with this, so I've been working with them to try to get it implemented and, you know, put out a quality product for it. So the company that they've chosen this time is going to be Datatel, and I'll give you some statistics and information on them, but it's going to be available twenty-four seven, it's, you know, a high availability type solution. Again, it's nothing new, it's something that we just don't have at this point for our customers to pay. So call, call accounting portion of it, the customer's going to call in, they'll have the option to actually pay by either pushing one to pay or, you know, two to speak to a live person. They'll have options to hear their credit balance, or their payment balance, and if they want to pay a partial balance or full balance, they'll have the option there for it. Currently, they're going to accept four different types of cards, MasterCard, Discover, Visa, and? MasterCard, Discover, whatever.
Amex.
And that's, those are the four cards they will accept at this point in time. Once they've made their payment, they'll have the option of either getting a text message showing the invoice number, or they can also get a verbal confirmation on the phone, they'll have the option for it. So currently, the City of Apopka has just shy of twenty-five thousand utility customers that pay each month. You'll see the portion of them, the bulk portion is going to be online, that's going to be close to, right about twelve thousand. Mail-in, twenty-four hundred. Am Scott also is one of the newer ones, they took on not too long ago, about two-hundred-and-fifteen are paying average. Dropbox, which is the box out in front of the utility billing office, of course, you have people walking in, close to three thousand, and, you know, bank bill pay as well. So sample call volumes from other local municipalities, you know, City of Eustis does about thirty a day, I can read all of them out for you. Some of these are broke down to weeks. It really depends on the location and, you know, who's going to use what. Most people are paying online, and they're used to doing that, so they move that portion of it. Currently, we don't charge anything for any type of payments, whether it's going to be, you know, over online or walking up, or currently for IVR, there's no anticipated charge for it. However, there are municipalities, again, pulling that I've spoke to, Seminole and Orange County and some Lake municipalities that do utility service, just trying to see who is actually charging a convenience fee for the use of the IVR or an online payment system. So there are several local municipalities that either pay a percentage of the actual bill, or there's a flat rate they'll pay for it. So currently, the Datatel system, about seventy percent of their customers actually have a. So, currently, the Datatel system, about 70% of their customers actually have a convenience fee that they charge, doesn't mean we have to do it, that's a decision as you as a council will make that, that's not for me, and I don't think Gladimir's going to make that decision either, but should you choose to do that, it would be a convenience fee for an option for somebody to pay, and that is, again, strictly up to you. The annual cost is just shy of $8,000, which covers both English and Spanish options for it. It's not just a push button, it's also voice recognition as well, so that you're not having to, you know, push buttons in the phone, or, you know, you're able to speak to it. I'm being told they have about, average, 100 people that call in per week wanting to pay their bill online, and if it happens to be a water cutoff or a new service, they can't take, they won't take the payment over the phone for any PCI compliance issues, so they will not take a credit card payment. So, this should speed it up, if they choose to go that route of handing off that call for it. It's going to be straightforward, you'll just need to know your account number and PIN to get onto it, and the average, it should be about a 24-hour turnaround for your actual payment to post with it. This is not a direct API into our website or into our financial software, it's going to be a third-party integrator into it, so it will be a 24-hour turnaround before your payment actually reflects. If you're having any issues with it, the utility billing department can certainly log in and see that you have made a payment for it. Security-wise, again, I mentioned it's kind of like a high availability portion, it's just another method for your customers to pay for it, that's a little more secure than actually an online payment as well, it's not as, it's not going to be attacked as much, but that's pretty much it. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Rob?
So, when a customer calls, and they've been paying, and a customer calls within the 24 hours, when does that payment get?
It's going to post the next day, so the next business morning will post. So, they're going to come in each morning, utility billing will actually take the pay file, post it to the system, and it'll be available at that time if you were to call back in to check your balance. So, if I were to, you know, make a payment at four in the afternoon, it'll be available first thing in the morning.
So, how will the customer, if they pay, let's say, they pay two or three days late, is there a late fee attached to it? How is that going to work?
Stepping outside of mine, I don't know their fee structure for this, I'm just going to help with the implementation portion.
It's Gladimir?
I can certainly find out, or if, I'm not sure, utility billing's not actually with us this evening.
Okay.
But it's usually, you know, it's going to kind of help some of the late payment portion, if somebody's running late last minute, they'll be able to get it in before the actual payment.
Will the system take their payment, and then how will they, you know, have the late payment, you know, to show?
That'd probably be on the next month's bill, I'm guessing. Again, I don't do anything with payments.
Do we know what the late payment penalty is?
Gladimir, do you know?
I do not.
No, okay.
Absolutely do not.
So, we haven't implemented yet, but no, no structure of late fees or how it posted has changed other than it will be posted the next day. So, if the customer is late, and they have a late fee today, and they pay, and late fee is posted there, they will be able to see it. If the late fee is tomorrow, and they pay today, and the late fee gets posted tomorrow, when they go to the system, they're going to have the late fee, because it's due on the day this, we don't control that, that's a system late penalty. So, every city is doing the same thing. So, if they are late, the penalty is going to show the next day. Just because I paid today, and I know I'm going to be late tomorrow, doesn't mean the late fee is going to be raised, you'll have the late fee posted on the right day. So, this is just a feature for people that want, well, number one, to avoid all the people that are coming to the office, and to make it easy for customers to pay online, the structure is not going to change. The late fee is still going to remain there, the customer should be able to know when they're late, and they still should be able to, you know, pay the penalty, or call in if they want to do a payment arrangement.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, it's more just a statement, if we are going to implement this, it's just something to, Commissioner Velazquez's point of, there's going to be some confusion, most likely, upfront, so it's just making sure that citizens are aware that even though I call on my due date, it's going to be late, and there's going to be late fee because of that. So, making sure that we implement that correctly, that that's fully aware, and maybe give a couple grace months, so to speak, of late fees or something, that are paying on the phone that are delayed or something.
We could certainly put something on the website, you know, kind of giving that language, that verbiage of, you know, this is how it's going to work, but nothing should change, really, for this versus paying online, I mean, it's, it's the same thing, it's just giving you another availability for it.
Sure, I understand.
I mean, you can do, right now, if you do the check online, it would be the same, if it was after hours, I guess it would be the next day posting?
Right.
Yeah, so, it would be the same thing as...
I agree, it's just, new technology always can confuse people sometimes, so anything that helps to reiterate that.
Mr. Smith, you look like you have a question?
Nothing.
Good. Okay. Well, thank, thank you, Rob, appreciate it, thanks, Gladimir, and Rallo, thanks for coming and being back up, we needed you. All right. Next up, agenda review.
No changes.
No changes to agenda, okay. Public comment.
Here we go.
Susan?
Um, did we do the... Pam Ripley?
Well, speaking in public is not my favorite, so please bear with me. I want to appear before you one more time to share with you the impact of how actions and sometimes inactions by the mayor's office and the city council affect the citizens of the community, not only financially, but personally and emotionally. Some of you know my story, but for those that don't, I want to, I want to bear with me while I share it. Sheeler, I'm a member of a community that's called Sheeler Oaks, that didn't have any flooding issues for 23 years, until the equipment, at that time, equipment and procedures were put in place in 1995 that prevented any future flooding until 2018, when our flooding problems began. The first flood issues were reported at the city in 2018, but nothing was done. 2019, my entire house flooded, and my husband and I were forced to go elsewhere while the house was being rebuilt. The real tragedy was that my husband was diagnosed with cancer while we were out of the house. I don't know if anybody's ever faced a cancer diagnosis, but it's terrifying. He went through chemo and radiation, still sleeping in a strange bed, in a rented house in a community where we, where we knew no one. After some weakness, he was taken to a hospital, he had deteriorated rapidly, and he died eight days later. This was all while we were still out of our home. I did, I did move back the following month, but our, our neighborhood continued to flood throughout 2020 during a particularly rainy season. My neighbor's children, who are ages five and seven, were so terrified of flooding that they cried and got physically ill every time it rained. We continued to beg and plead the city for, for a resolution, and we lived with sandbags around our homes. Eventually, the new inlets were installed, but it took two and a half years after my house flooded, and three and a half years after the first flooding, when that was done. That was entirely too long for us to have to live with this problem. Especially when the, when the project was stopped partway through, we talked to the workers, after the first five of the 14 inlets were installed, they stopped and said that there was a wait-and-see attitude to see if anything was going to happen before they installed the rest of them. We did come back to the city council, the project was eventually completed. I also appeared before the council because I needed some assistance in my claim for reimbursement for losses I suffered due to the flood. My, my flood insurance covered my structural damage, but I was out because of, I was seeking reimbursement for losses that weren't covered by my flood insurance. The day after I appeared, well, actually, the first letter of denial I got from the city, from the insurance company, came before I even filed the insurance claim. I was told it was a mistake, but I came anyway. I came to the city council meeting and was told that once the issue was referred to the insurance company, it was out of the city's hands. But the problem with that is, I never heard from the insurance company, even though I called them, sent them emails, and tried to provide them with information for the claims process. But their information was all based on, their denial was based on only the information given to them by the city. So, how can a fair decision be reached when only the city is consulted by the insurance company? I even noted at the last meeting that I was the only person, that I was not the only person it spoken to that had received a denial without benefit of any investigation, and expressed concern at the ethics of the city's insurance company operating in this manner. People expressed concern, but nothing, I don't know if any action's been taken to explore this any further. After I received the letter of denial, I had a personal meeting with Mayor Nelson, Edward Bass, and the city attorney. They reiterated that the city was standing by the insurance company's decision to deny my claim, and then accused me of overcharging the city for the repairs to my irrigation system that was damaged during the installation of the storm sewer, storm sewer inlets. I had followed Edward Bass's instructions and provided them with a detailed invoice for the, for the damage, which was only for $560, and I paid $1,600 of the remaining repairs, and I offered to provide those invoices to show them that I was not trying to cheat the city. I've never received an apology for this accusation. I then contacted State Representative Brown's office for guidance and assistance. Ms. Green informed me that she spoke with Mayor Nelson, and was told that the city had spent the money to fix the flooding problems, but were absolutely not going to reimburse me for my losses. She apologized that they could not help me further, and she said, basically, the city and mayor's office were accountable to no one. The gist of the, of our conversation was that it didn't matter what evidence I had, who I spoke with, the city didn't have to listen to me or review my documentation, all they had to do was continue to say no. So, it boils down to, you just can't fight City Hall. So, I've made my home in Apopka for 38 years. We built our first home here and raised our family, but the last three years have been absolutely miserable. I've been made to feel unwelcome, and at times, I've felt intimidated. I suppose it was idealistic to think I would be, if I persisted, there would be a sense of fairness and justice, and at least maybe get a partial reimbursement for the monies that I lost, but I'll never fully recover from this experience. And I now see I'm fighting a losing battle, and I don't feel like I want to stay where I feel like I don't matter, so I've decided to sell my house. I'm leaving Apopka. I wish you all the best, but it doesn't feel like home anymore. The last three years have been financially, physically, and emotionally draining. We moved here when I was in my late twenties, I'm 67, and I'm starting over again. I'm hoping Orlando will give me a fresh start and positive memories to build on. I just felt like I needed to come here and let you know that your decisions and your actions impact people, and you need to listen to people and not cut out the public comment, because a lot of the actions that took place wouldn't, I don't think we would have had the improvements done in my neighborhood if I hadn't come to the, to the public comments section, because nothing was done until myself and my neighbors came and spoke here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ripley. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I just say this to you, Pam? I do remember when you came here, and there were council members here that we, we pushed to get those inlets put into your community, and so, I'm sorry that you are leaving, I've gotten to know you over the past two years, and I realize that there were a lot of challenges, and I'm just sorry to hear that you are leaving, and I know that, I know how many times you have come here, and...
It has.
Hey, Josh Gaines?
What was his last name?
I'm the president of Oaks Okaiwa.
Name and, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yep, sure. Joshua Gaines, 1070 Piedmont Oaks Drive. This year, I'm serving for the president of Oaks Okaiwa. We have a number of sidewalks that have been damaged or broken, and we've had numerous homeowners call in since 2019, asking for repairs or some sort of status update on where those are. I've called in numerous times, left messages on Mr. Hathaway's voicemail, and I've never received a call back. So, I'd like to know a status of where those are at.
If you, Dio is back in the back, he will make sure that gets taken care of for you.
Okay.
So, just, Dio, can you give him your card? Okay, thank you.
If it's not, I'll be back here next month.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the other action item, we have a home that hasn't been kept up to date or been repaired for in a long time in our subdivision. The homeowners association has taken what measures we can with our HOA law firm, I know there's a foreclosure process going on with it, it's 2140 Piedmont, or Okaiwa Oaks Drive, excuse me, writer home, if anybody knows that.
If you can send me that, that address, we'll have code enforcement take a look at that.
Okay, so, we've called code enforcement, and we've called the health department, and we're not getting anywhere, so, if we can, we can try that again, but if not, I'll be here again next month. The other, the last item I had was, there's some standing water, so every time we have rain, there's a, there's a house, Susan, can you give me an address, please?
1051...
1051 Piedmont Oaks Drive, near where there's the intersection, because we have a loop that goes around in the back of our subdivision, water tends to pull there quite a bit, and the drainage doesn't seem to be working. We are concerned that that's going to become a sinkhole hazard eventually, because the water's going to erode underneath. Can we have the city, please, take a look at that?
Yeah, what, what type of dress?
1045, 1051.
Okay, got it.
1045 and...
1051?
1051 Piedmont Oaks Drive.
Okay, perfect.
That's all.
So, you have called all these in to the city, you've called all...
Yes, numerous times. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Roger Miller?
My name is Roger Miller, I live in the vistas in Aral Estate, and my issue, the reason I came here tonight to talk, is my concern is about short-term rentals in residential areas in Apopka. When I say short-term rentals, one day and up, people commonly...
Airbnb.
People commonly refer to them as Airbnb, VR, well, VRBO, everybody clearly understands, I think. This is something that seems to be emerging even more and more frequently, and, you know, we live in a resort community in central Florida, so, we're on the fringes of all that resort and the, the attractions, but we have, my neighborhood, next door to me, we have a short-term rental home that just popped up a few months ago, and the things that are concerning about that are all the traffic in and out. You could have five to 50 neighbors in a month's time, because the people might, in this particular case, they've had one-day rentals, you know, you got, when you, when you have someone coming in a short term, it's, basically, you're getting a cheap hotel room. And in doing that, they pay a little attention to the neighborhood, trash issues, they pay a little attention to where they're parking, they might be parking in front of a fire hydrant or mailboxes, and those things are all annoying, to say the least. And I will, I want to add to my statements, I have spoken to James Hitt, the community development director, and also Mr. Rodriguez, they were very friendly and very helpful in their guidance, they both spoke to me personally, and they explained to me the constraints that the city of Apopka is under by the statutes of the state of Florida. But still, I wanted to be on record as pointing out the concerns we have locally, because I think this is going to grow and become a bigger and bigger problem.
I, I know that for the last, at least four or five years, the legislature's tried to tackle that issue in Tallahassee on a, on a statewide basis, and they've yet to come up with a, with a policy that, that, you know, would be statewide, so I, and we keep, you know, looking for guidance from, from Tallahassee, and we've yet to get anything that, that we can, we can base our, you know, our decisions on. So, I mean, we can take a look, I, I know there are some cities, Michael, if you could maybe take a look, I don't, I don't know if anybody's got success... don't know if anybody's got successful...
I could, as, as I advised Mr. Miller, the statute is pretty clear that the state has preempted any local regulation of what the statute's called vacation rentals to the state. And if we were to step in and create a new regulation, we're going to be subject to prosecution on the part of the state against the city, which would include paying the state's attorney's fees, and also, I think the last preemption statute actually imposes liability upon elected officials if they were to pass an ordinance that regulates a field that's been preempted to the state.
I think what we can do, I think, you know, if we've got a house that continues to be a problem, you know, especially loud music at night, then we can obviously have code enforcement. We can kind of ratchet that up if there, there are problem houses there, but yeah, it's, it's a...
That's correct. I did advise Mr. Miller that if there are effects of the use that are really neutral and not really, not necessarily directly related to a short term, or because it's a short term, noise, parking, those issues, those can be regulated, because those are going to apply equally to all uses. But the city actually creating new categories within zoning or regulations as to the length of time properties can be, can be rented out, that has been preempted to the state, and we, we cannot create any local regulation to that.
And I truly understand what Mr. Rodriguez is saying, but I still felt that there was value in presenting it to the council...
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely. To be aware of anything that may come up in the future that would allow us as a city to change that for the benefit of the residents. You know, I live in a small residential neighborhood where there's one lane, one street in and one street out. People have been there 20-plus years, over half of us, and it's not intended as a resort stay, you know, come in, drop in for a day and leave environment, and that's, it's troubling for all the neighbors.
Yeah, you know, I would say is, you know, we need to have a, a letter of writing campaign to our state legislators, hey, we'd like to have some regulations over, over short-term rentals, and, and see if we can get something to happen. But it's, it's, it's been a, been a slog, and we hadn't gotten very far. So anyway, but thank you for coming out and, you know, expressing your...
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you for all what you do. It doesn't happen without you. Three comments tonight. One is, I was, I had the opportunity the first time participate in Cops and Bobbers, which took place May 7th, organized by Jason Wiggins, Chief McKinley there. I know, Mayor, we saw you there, Bankson. If the rest of you came later, I was out fishing, so I don't know who else came, but it introduced, identified by schools, 24 children, all but a couple had never fished before in their lives. We had actually one officer from the Apopka Police Department never fished before in her life. By the end of the day, they were all handling worms, handling shiners, handling the fish they caught. It was an incredible experience. We had wonderful volunteers. Jason's got the list of all the people that were involved with it, but it was a wonderful program. I just wanted, I'd noticed it wasn't, one picked up in the paper, it wasn't mentioned here, so I, I felt it was an obligation to do so. The other two items, I'm going to beat you until it comes. Backflow preventers, it needs to come back before this commission. We need to take care of it. I've talked to so many neighbors, anywhere from 250 to 950 for a lousy $150 part. We need to take control of this. I think it'll streamline it for the city. They'll know what's been done, where it's been done, they can send teams out and get it done, and there's accommodations that got to be made, but it's time that this gets addressed. It should be handled by the city as Altamont Springs and Orange County has done successfully, I think, can work for us. Final item today is the city fix-up cleanup. Coming down 441 is horrible. We're trying to bring in businesses, we're trying to bring in people, we're trying to bring in, bring in restaurants, and you come down, you've got trash discarded everywhere, tires discarded, dilapidated landscapers, fences, overgrowth, pressure washing needs. When you come down there, it's not a good presentation. In the last two weeks, I've also ridden through Sanford, Lake Mary, Mount Door, Winter Garden, and Eustis even, and they're not perfect communities, they have their spots. We have our spots that look good too, but we need to clean up our act if we expect to bring businesses into our community. Thank you.
Rogers Beckett, 7 West Main Street. Well, mine is more of a recommendation. I wasn't able to attend the meeting last, two weeks ago, I guess, call it. And I noticed that when you're there online, you have access to the packet, but the packet doesn't have any attachments to it. So you have a presentation that's going on, but you don't know what they're referring to.
We can't, we can't do that due to ADA compliance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no other way?
You, you can call, and we'll get, you know, we'll get it to you, but it, it's, Michael, you want to weigh in, just?
Right. It's, if this, if there's an issue with the software, there's, I think it's the PDFs, there's a certain issue where it, if we, if we put out the PDFs, and they're not ADA compliant, then there's, there's an issue. So we have to make sure that the items that we do present out are ADA compliant. However, there are the other mechanisms that you can request, the documentation, there are other avenues. However, the way that I think electronically, and IT probably can better explain the technical aspects, why there's certain items that can't be properly displayed.
So this issue, and it's been around an issue for a long time, came up a few years back where the city had a tester coming by looking at the website, namely PDFs, and we had probably just shy of 3,000 on our website. And he requested to have three years' worth of council packets, the full packets of self, the agendas, water quality reports, which all those are items required, you know, probably part of your website. So we ended up having to take it down, like all the other municipalities throughout Florida. We've since then started correcting a lot of the, the PDFs, making actual online forms, HTML forms that are compatible. Our current municode software we're using for our agenda software has a public packet, but it is not the full packet that gets released for you and the commissioners. And if somebody wants, you know, does the records request needs it, they can certainly have it. But that packet can contain sometimes close to, you know, 1,000 pages, and a lot of those are engineering drawings that we can never correct in the amount of time we would have to get this done. So there, there is a smaller portion or a smaller packet that should be made public, and it's not going to have, again, the full, the full content of what you get, just because there's, there's no way to get it compliant. And again, you, you can certainly put it right back on the website again, and you kind of flirt with disaster with it, but I, I wouldn't recommend that.
Rogers, that answer...
Well, I guess my question was, I thought up on Akil Shimer, they was posting the entire packet.
They were.
So that's just what I remembered.
Yeah, absolutely were. And it wasn't, and all we were waiting on is to be, I can't tell you how many people have been sued around here. We had, we had, had somebody from, like, Melbourne suing us because he couldn't see our packet. Had no business, no dealings with Apopka, but we were being sued by somebody from Melbourne. So we're, we're putting what we can put out that's, that's, that's ADA compliant, and anything else is available. I, I don't know what else to, to do that would... Robbie, it... Okay, okay, all right, cool.
Mary Laverne, 519 Birch Court. I submitted to speak to you about agenda packets, and Roger stole my, stole my thunder. So I understand the issue of ADA compliance. However, that has not prohibited the cities from publishing a full packet, and I was actually concerned when I tried to prepare my remarks this evening on another agenda item and found, not even the ordinance. And so I, I'm, I'm having issues with what I, what's being said here, because if the ordinance wasn't even part of what's put out as the packet, as what I could access, those are words. I don't see how, that's not a picture, that's not an engineer drawing, those are words. It has a PDF that could easily be OCR'd. There are no excuses. We can do better. When you have maps and pictures, there's something called alt text. You can ask people in the alt text to contact your ADA coordinator. That's why you have those. So I'm very concerned that we use that as an excuse to pull the curtain and make people jump over, over barriers to get the things that we as citizens should be able to access readily online. Second, I want to address the issue about minutes. Your minutes are a permanent record of the city, permanent. The retention schedule is, you never destroy them. My comments tonight should not go into the ether. Your videos, those get destroyed. Your audio, those have a retention schedule. Your minutes don't. If you can't summarize what I spoke on, even if, I'm not asking, nobody's asking for, for verbatim. If I needed that, I'd call a court reporter. But at the very least, a summary should be provided for posterity. Thank you.
Rob, you want to respond to that or not? Rob, you want...
Ms. Laverne is correct. PDFs, you can possibly OCR them, however, the OCR doesn't always give you the correct characters. It's not an excuse, I wish I didn't have to do it. I can go to any website, probably in central Florida, pull down one of their documents, put a screen reader, and it's not going to be an accessible document. I have spent a lot of time dealing with this, a lot of hours going through this, and, you know, it's, you don't, it's a chance that you want to take if you want to put it up there. And I'm not saying not to do it, it's just a chance you're going to take. We use certain software, we use Common Look to fix some of our PDFs that we have to put back on, but we're moving away from PDFs, that's old. So we're trying to use all of online forms, create fillable forms for it, and using the actual software we have for our website. As far as municode for your, your ordinances, I mean, aren't some of that hosted by municode still? Okay, so I don't look at the actual ordinances, I mean, I don't know how they're laying up to it, but, you know, anything we put back up, I would love to just put right back out and turn it on again, and that's, it's, it's just a matter of somebody telling me to do it. But you're, you're kind of playing a fire.
Yeah, you're running the risk of...
And a lot of, a lot of municipalities have put theirs back up, though. And, you know, it's a screen reader versus looking at it or using Adobe to read it, it's a completely different animal. If a screen reader doesn't read it, reads your, your heading level ones, two subsections, pages, lines, tables, it, all that stuff matters. And, you know, somebody who can't see, my brother's blind, he was born blind, he uses a screen reader, so I'm very well-versed in screen reading and how it takes to make a compliant document for it. I'm certainly not trying to hide anything from the city of Apopka, and I'll put whatever we need out there to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. We got, we got five, six, seven items on the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of those consent items? If not, look for a motion to approve the seven items on consent. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have first business item, Radley, once you come on up. He is, you know, let me just step back a, just a minute here and tell you that Commissioner Bankson just tested positive for COVID, and he had a pretty good conversation with Mr. Radley Williams, who I'm presenting to you to be our next Parks and Rec Director. So I thought I would put him in the back, not because of any other reason than, you know, he was exposed to Commissioner Bankson for a pretty good period of time and in pretty close contact. So you can take it off at, at the, at the podium, but anyway, had a, had a nice conversation with Mr. Williams. We had a couple of our staff from Parks and Rec that came in, and we, we interviewed him. Spent his whole time, his whole career's been at Lake Mary. He's the Assistant Parks and Rec Director, and the, the greatest positive comments I've heard are from my good friend, the mayor, David Miller. He and I served in the state legislature for, I think it was four years, and glowing accolades about Radley, but understand, you know, to be able to get the director position versus an assistant, is, he said he understands why he'd want to come to Apopka, and he gave him his blessing, and he didn't, he wasn't mad at me. So I think with that, I just want Radley to kind of give you, you know, his background and where he's been and, and hope, and where he hopes to take us. So Radley, with that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. I'm honored to be here tonight with you, and I thank you for this tremendous opportunity to serve the Apopka community. A little bit about me, I was born and raised just up the road in Sanford, Florida. My twin brother and I are the oldest of six boys. Both of my parents were career public school teachers in Seminole County. I'm a second-generation UCF grad, go Knights! And I've enjoyed an almost 18-year career in the Parks and Rec Department of the city of Lake Mary, starting as a part-time recreation assistant and advancing my way up over the years to assistant director. I want to recognize some of my Lake Mary coworkers who are here with me tonight to show some support. My success is forever linked to their support and effort, and I'm so grateful that I'll continue to have a friendship and relationship with them. As the child of two school teachers, I'm very aware, I am very aware of how important accessible parks and recreation sports programs and facilities are to so many families. It's my goal to provide the best quality of service and facilities while increasing accessibility to programming and facilities for all in this community. I also want to take a quick second to say, to say hi to my parents who are watching from Houston, Texas, where my dad is undergoing some cancer treatment at MD Anderson. They've always been my biggest cheerleaders, and I know how proud they are tonight. Apopka is an incredible city, and I view this as an opportunity of a lifetime between the world-class Northwest Recreation Complex and the recently acquired Camp Weewa. Big things are happening in Apopka, and I feel very lucky and fortunate and excited to join the team. So thank you again, and I look forward to working with everyone here, and just excited.
Any questions for, for Radley?
Well, I did spend time with him before Bankson. I did, remember.
You did, yeah.
I did. And we had, we had a very good conversation, and, you know, we talked about, of course, the park, you know, Northwest Park, and sort of given him a background and kind of gave him a little laundry list of some of the things that a lot of the families are looking for as we improve the park. And so it was, it was a good conversation in the sense of, to just kind of give him a little insight of, of some of the things that we're looking for, for that park especially. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to see him bring his experience and his energy to that park.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I met with him as well, and had a very great conversation, and made sure that he understood how important recreation was to our youth as well as to our seniors here in the city of Apopka. And so he pledged that he's going to do his utmost to make sure that we exceed from where we already are, and so I'm welcoming him aboard.
Thank you. Commissioner Nesta?
We met, I was actually the first one, well before Bankson, so... We had a great conversation, though, and we talked about Northwest Recreation Complex. I've been trying to hit five miles there every single day, so got a lot of little notes and things like that, and, and just very excited about your resume. And, and also, you spoke about accreditation that you took to Lake Mary, and also something that I'm hoping you'll bring here as well and get us up to snuff with that. So that's really exciting. The one thing I said right when we wrapped up, and I'll say it again, is dream big, bring it to us, we'll make it happen. I think you have a lot of power in your hands that can really make this city do some cool things. So thanks for coming aboard.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, awesome.
All right. With that, need the motion to approve Radley Williams as our next Parks and Rec Director. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your team coming out, that's awesome support. That's great, thank you. I saw a whole bunch of new faces, I was trying to figure out who they were.
Well, I would have done that.
Yeah, okay. Next up, we've got a city council, we're, due to Commissioner Becker's leaving the council, we now have an opening on the Lake Apopka Natural Gas Board of Directors, so I'm looking for somebody to, to fill that spot, and need somebody to make a, a recommendation, a motion to, for somebody to fill in that spot, so...
Well, I, I know that I did get a phone call from our Edward Bass, and I did serve back in 214, 215, I served for two years, but he had said to me that Commissioner Smith was interested. Is that correct?
I am.
You know, I think it's a great opportunity for me, it was a learning opportunity, and I just feel that it would, by, you know, kind of saying, would you like to do it, would give you an opportunity to learn something about Lake Apopka, because it is part of the city, and you're more than welcome to do it. I did it, and sometimes it's nice to give someone else an opportunity. So you owe me.
Wow.
So I will make a motion for Alexander Smith, who did express to represent us with Lake Apopka.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Welcome Commissioner Smith, Lake Apopka Natural Gas Board.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, who's this? Is this Jim, or Michael, I'm sorry, Michael?
I was just handling the slides. Do I got to put it up on now? Oh, there it is, okay. All right. Michael Rodriguez, City Attorney, the next item is the request for the council to approve and authorize signing the contract for the purchase of the real property. It's known as Champ Me Port, Champ Me, Champ Me Portion, Town of Apopka, Lot 137. This is the property located at, I think it's 633, 633 East 7th Street. The property is currently owned, or South Park, sorry, yeah, South Park Avenue. The property is currently owned by MS Smith Investments LLC. This property is one of the properties that the city is needing to acquire in order to complete the assemblage of lots to prepare the construction of the new public safety facility. So we are currently, we have reached an agreement with the property owner for the purchase of the property. There is one lot remaining in order to complete the assemblage of the lots, in order to complete the improvement and expansion of the public safety facility. So this is one of the lots. So I'm presenting to you the contract for authorization to begin moving this forward to closing. Just for the record, the property is being purchased for $220,000 in order to complete, this is part of the costs of the expansion of the public safety facility. So what we're seeking is a motion to authorize the city to execute the contract, and we begin the process to move forward to achieve closing, which I think under the contract, closing is looking to be scheduled for May 30th.
So any questions for Michael on this, this item?
I just had a few comments kind of to the council, just something to think about. One, May 30th is Memorial Day, so I don't think we can close on that day.
We go to the next business day.
Yeah. And then additionally, too, I know it said that in the contract or in the PSA that we have timelines to get a survey. I would always suggest to do that, I really would like to kind of, as we start purchasing properties, to make sure that we just have that in our file. I think it's a good due diligence, and I think that's going to push closing as well just because surveys are taking a while right now. And then the only other concern that I had is that we're doing a leaseback, which is, I don't have a problem with till the end of the year, but I think there's already a tenant in place as well, so I just want to make sure we're all aware that that's kind of the situation, that it's going to be a sublease as well, but we're not responsible for that unless they overstay January 1st, 2023. So just as long as that's all covered and we all understand kind of what we're getting into there.
Right, for clarification, the, once we close, at the closing, the current owner is going to be given a lease. The lease is going to, it's a fixed lease that expires on December 31st of this year. Any then leases that the current owner has with a tenant, that'll then end up becoming a sublease. And any issues between the subtenant and the owner, who is going to become our tenant, that's between them. And yes, at the end of the lease, then we have possession of the property, and if there is someone who retains possession of the property subject after that lease, we have all of our rights as a property owner to remove the property person or whoever is on the property to remove them.
Sure. I just want to make sure we're all aware of that.
Sure.
So, yeah, the only thing that I really want to push for is making sure we get a survey.
We can check with the property owner to see if they have a current survey. If they don't, I can order a survey.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
This is why I'm happy we have a field term.
What's that? All right, if not, look for a motion to approve the contract for purchase of property at 633 South Park Avenue for the construction of the new public safety complex. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Chief Willems.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. I'm excited to bring to you tonight the contract for the Architectural and Engineering Consulting Services for State Permanent Station 6. That's something we've been excited about for quite a while. Back in, this year, 2021, 22, we know we approved the budget for the build of the station. We've, we're able to reutilize Lund's Design Firm, which was established as a continuing service contract provider back in June 1st of 2016 with the building of Station 5. We've negotiated with them, and we brought forth the proposed contract you see before you, with all the explanations, and we're seeking permission to move forward and award and execute that agreement. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Any questions for the chief? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we look for a motion to authorize the fire chief to execute the continuing architectural and engineering agreement for Fire Station 6 with the Lund's Group. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, next, other chief.
During last year's budget presentation, I mentioned that our body cameras were becoming obsolete, and that we were going to have to address the fact of replacing them with newer technology. Before I get into my presentation, though, I want to recognize Corporal Aaron Girardi, who's standing over there in the corner, for Officer Wiggins, who's on vacation right now, but as we moved into looking at how to replace our body cameras, he took the ball and he ran with it, did a lot of extensive research on body cameras, had some trial companies come in so we could trial their cameras before we made a final decision of what we felt we wanted to go with. He also prepared a presentation for staff to why he wanted to choose or why the employees, this really went to the officer level to decide which one worked best for them out in the field, and you know, he did a great job for that, so I want to recognize him real quick. Our current body camera system, we currently utilize Reveal's body camera system that was initiated in 2015 and has been upgraded one time in mid-2017. No camera upgrade has been completed or offered since 2017. Cameras were purchased to enhance accuracy of officer reports, testimony of court, as well as provide transparency to the public. Reveal camera video is stored and backed up on several servers hosted by and maintained by the City of Apopka's IT Department. Reveal cameras can only be activated manually by the officer. The cameras are clipped to the officer's uniform with an attached gator clip. Unfortunately, that's a significant point of failure for us. During any kind of response to resistance, the cameras are falling off, the clips are breaking, and now we're having problems with the company wanting to replace those broken clips. Currently, we are returning approximately 14 Reveal body cameras a month for repairs. They're not holding up anymore. The Reveal camera system utilizes the Reveal software DEMs to access videos taken once uploaded from the camera to the servers. This software is not accessible by officers on the road and can only be utilized at terminals inside the Apopka Police Station. This failure, I'm sorry, this feature and lack of accessibility adds several man-hours to access videos during taskings for the State Attorney's Office. The lack of accessibility removes an officer from the road to mark videos for evidence. On average, the agency has a 30% video marking success rate due to the time it takes them to go back into the office and mark these videos for evidence. Due to the lack of functionality from outdated equipment, several third-party software programs have been purchased to ensure videos can be utilized. We've purchased software Cutel, Spotlight redaction software, and iRecord. Cutel is a third-party evidence-based software which is stored on City of Apopka servers. Officers upload videos that are evidence based on the Cutel system, or to the Cutel system, I apologize. This additional system requires officers to access the DEM system, download the evidentiary videos to a desktop terminal, log into Cutel, upload the video to the Cutel system, label, and choose retention time per Florida state statutes. The system also allows our evidence techs to copy videos to DVDs when videos are requested by the State Attorney for case review. Currently with our system, our evidence techs have to spend time downloading videos, body cam videos for court purposes, to DVDs which we then ship off to the State Attorney. I think everybody knows with today's technology, that probably shouldn't be happening. Having to utilize the software adds the already saved video to an additional server. So now we have redundancy in servers just because of this third-party software that we have to operate our body-worn cameras. Spotlight redaction software, it's third-party redaction software purchased because Cutel, DEMs, or Reveal cameras do not have redaction software built into them. Utilizing this software allows videos to be redacted in accordance with Florida State Statute 119 prior to public release. Spotlight, on our current desktop machine, requires approximately four to 10 minutes of redaction time per one minute of original video. On average, it's estimated that for every one hour of body cam video, it takes eight hours to redact. Unfortunately, Corporal Girardi is the one that has to do that. We are training other people, once we move to a new system, we'll have more people that can do that also. This is partly due to it being a third-party software that we try to make work with Cutel's videos. Spotlight can only be utilized on one desktop, it's not a web-based application, therefore he has to come, everybody has to come into the office to do any redaction. When the machine or software goes down, video redactions are not able to be completed in a timely manner until the machine is repaired. In the last two years, approximately 10 IT help tickets were created due to the machine or software issues. Our interview rooms and booking area are capable of recording to IT run servers also. These four cameras are run on a third-party software system called iRecord. This system is only accessible and viewable on one desktop terminal located in the Apopka Police Department. Again, it is not web-based. As with other systems, when this terminal or software goes down, the agency is not able to record interviews using this system or access any previous videos recorded. Officers have to resort to recording the interview in the interview rooms with their body cameras. Investigators or officers can only view the interview recordings on the one desktop terminal located by the interview rooms. IT maintains servers. IT maintains several servers for our digital storage needs. These servers have continually needed to be upgraded and expanded due to the increased storage demand as the agency has grown. Over the next two years, physical servers are expected to increase in cost by 27% to 35%. This increased cost will increase the city's budget as body-worn camera footage becomes longer and requires more videos to be maintained for court purposes. We currently store our same body-worn camera footage three times for the following programs: DEMs, System, Cutel, and Blue Team. So on our servers, we have that same video stored in three different places for those software programs. After our review of body-worn cameras, we had, I think it was three or four companies come in, they provided us with their cameras, the officers were outfitted with their cameras, IT department worked with us very closely, they recommended that we go with the Axon camera system also. It integrated with all of our systems, our firewalls and everything else, without any issues. We had issues with integration with some of the other companies, the cameras weren't as prolific, they didn't have some of the features that Axon currently has, and as I move through the thing, you'll see that Axon's probably the most used body camera across the United States. The initial trial included Axon's cloud-based storage system, evidence.com, which is web-based, Axon Body 3 cameras, Axon Taser 7 body-worn camera, automatic activation, noted as a trigger, Axon Firearm body-worn automatic activation, also known as a trigger there, and I'll go into those a little bit more in the presentation. Evidence.com is Axon-secured and encrypted cloud-based system used for digital media storage. This storage is CEGIS-compliant in accordance with our higher accreditation standards. Evidence.com is used by several federal agencies to include the FBI and numerous law enforcement agencies across the country. This high level of usage ensures Axon updates their security and encryption several times a month. The Apopka Police Department's Evidence.com profile can only, will only be able to be accessed by Apopka Police Department personnel with user access. Evidence.com will allow us to store our video recordings, body-worn camera in interview rooms, and TASER usage information in a single location that can be accessed by any authorized user from any computer, increasing ease of use and efficiency. ApopkaEvidence.com administrator-controlled user profiles can grant access to the State Attorney's Office and surrounding agencies using Axon's CEGIS-secured network. So we no longer have to make the DVDs, we just give a link to the State Attorney that's working that case, and they can access the body-worn cameras and the system's still secure. This access allows Apopka Police Officers, Evidence Techs, to share tasking evidence videos with specified entities' profiles, eliminating the need to copy the videos to DVDs. Case-specific videos can be shared with only specific users, keeping the rest of the agency videos secure. Evidence.com also has the ability to allow citizens that are witnesses to a reported crime to upload video to the case from the scene. And the link can be created by the officer's laptop while he is on the scene, he or she is on the scene. During the trial period, Evidence.com was tested on current agency-issued laptops, all software operated and worked seamlessly with our current IT firewalls. Officers were able to log into Evidence.com using their installed cell cards on their laptops. This feature is not currently available with Reveal, it kept officers on the streets, patrolling, and being visible instead of being at a dedicated terminal inside the police department. During the test program, officers were able to mark videos for evidence, purpose in accordance with policy, utilizing their assigned laptops instead of responding back to the agency. This feature, not currently available with Reveal, kept officers on the streets. During the trial phase, there was a 56% increase in video marking and retention. Again, that's due to the fact that they don't have to go into the office, they can just mark the videos as evidence right on their laptops. There's another feature within Evidence.com that I'll go into in a few minutes that'll increase that even more. This is an important statistic that is very important because as cases get older, videos that are not marked are purged from our system. With COVID, the current court systems are behind on prosecuting cases, which is just, excuse me, I apologize, which is delaying taskings for body-worn camera videos. If not properly and timely marked, a video will be purged, making potential evidence or interviews inaccessible. When polled at the end of the trial period, officers attributed the increase in marking and retention to ease of access from their issued laptops instead of having to use the single computer terminal in APD. At the officer level, the reviews for the Evidence.com software's ease of use was all positive. Officers were excited to log into the evidence system to review and mark videos. Unlike DEMs, Evidence.com never crashed or needed to be reloaded during officer usage, increasing ease of use. To aid further in officer ease of access and accountability, Axon offers an auto-tagging feature. This feature takes information from our MyCAD, which is our computer-aided dispatch system, and imports case numbers and retention periods automatically, so that should increase our tagging of evidence also, our evidence videos. With this feature, marking and retention period accuracy will increase from the 86 mark established during the trial period. Axon's Evidence.com has redaction software built into the system. This redaction software incorporates an algorithm and artificial intelligence to assist in identifying faces, laptop screens with sensitive information, and license plates within videos. An assigned redaction officer can then work through the video to fine-tune any missed items per rules established in Florida state statutes. So if you look at their redaction software, if there's a license plate, a face, any face or computer screens or something simulates a computer screen, it highlights it, and all they got to do is identify that, and it's already marked. So we don't have, we have to, when we redact software, these videos, we have to go frame by frame by frame to make sure that we're, taken out everything that's required under Florida state statutes. During the trial period, video redaction times per minute of raw video decreased from three to 10 minutes to one to five minutes. This decrease increased the efficiency in response to public records requests. It also saved man-hours, decreasing labor required to complete a public records request. Axon also offers secured outsourced redactions if Apopka redaction specialists become inundated at any time. The Axon Body 3 camera is the one we've chosen to go with. The agency tested the camera, it is cell-enabled, it's a Body 3 camera. These cameras are capable of live streaming, live GPS tracking, and field uploads to Evidence.com. What we're going to be able to do with the cell-enabled body camera is if one of our officers is not responding to not responding to their radio for some reason, they're on call for service, a disturbance or something like that, we can actually login to the camera as long as it's turned on and see what's going on. And we can dispatch backup officers to them or anything else. If we can't locate the officer, the GPS function will tell us where the officer is as long as the camera's turned on through the cellphone, through the cell card feature. They have a large on and off button for easy and accurate activation. During the trial period, officers were experiencing upwards to 18 hours of battery life. Our current Qtel body camera batteries last approximately 10 hours. The Axon body cameras have the ability for officers to download and charge their cameras at home through an encrypted network if they choose to. So with this, we're purchasing docking stations that they can put in their house, their camera will always be with them, coming to work, going home. It charges at their house, it downloads the videos from their house on an encrypted network provided through Evidence.com, and they will always have a charged body camera video with them. Several mounting options are available to attach a camera to the officer's uniform. They offer three or four different options, not a single one of them failed during our trial period. They all were very secure, they attach to our outer vest carriers that most of the officers are wearing now, they also attach to the uniform shirt if they choose to wear their vest internally. Features continued, clear framework playback reduces motion blur during recording, which results in clearer evidence playback with a nearer photographic level of detail. Alerts, live maps and streaming, as I mentioned, Axon Respond allows permissioned staff to view officer location when recording and activate live streams while on scene or during critical incidents. Live stream will allow officers on scene of a critical incident to use the body camera as a video system to the command post, allowing staff and other units such as SWAT to observe the scene live in real time. Mic, multi-mic audio, four microphones on the body worn camera work together to capture clear audio with algorithms optimized for law enforcement scenarios. Smart sensor that attaches to an officer's holster and activates the Axon Body 3 camera, if not already activated, to automatically begin to record an officer's weapon, when an officer's weapon is drawn. All Axon body cameras within 30 to 50 feet of the officer that draws his weapon will automatically activate if they are not automatically, if they are not on. So we're purchasing pressure switches that'll go on the bottom of our holsters. If a firearm's drawn, the body camera of that officer will come on if it's not on. And any officer through a Bluetooth signal, their body camera will come on. The neat thing about this is, you'll see in a few minutes that almost all agencies in Orange County have Axon as their body worn camera choice, their cameras will come on too if they're working a scene with us. So any officer with an Axon body camera within 30 to 50 feet of an officer draws his weapon and his TASER will have the same capability. When the TASER is turned on, it will activate any body camera within 30 to 50 feet of that TASER automatically if it's not already on. The TASER 7 has been upgraded from our current TASER X26 with the following features. It's redesigned darts with smart probes to improve accuracy, increase target retention, and improve attainment. High-visibility green top laser to enable better daytime targeting. Louder warning arc to serve as an additional deterrent prior to having to utilize the TASER. Wireless connection to the Body 3 camera to activate the camera with the switch that I just mentioned. Rechargeable batteries that act as a USB and download the TASER's data logs to Evidence.com. All the software for the TASER is contained in the battery pack, the battery packs are rechargeable, they go into a charging system, and everything's downloaded and it will be stored in Evidence.com also. So any log that is made by that TASER will be downloaded into Evidence.com. When they are docked, they receive the latest firmware updates, ensuring TASER's are running the most up-to-date software. Our interview room camera upgrade, our interview rooms and officer work area will be upgraded with new cameras with audio recording capabilities. New cameras will download to Evidence.com and they'll be accessible through a web-based platform of Evidence.com where they can be reached from their laptops or any other computer in the agency. Downloading to Evidence.com will allow officers and detectives to view interviews from their desk or laptops instead of having to use a single terminal located outside the interview rooms. Local agencies using Axon Systems, Orlando Police Department, Orange County Sheriff's Office, Altamont Springs, Maitland, Winter Park, Winter Garden, Windermere, O'Koye, University of Central Florida, St. Cloud, and Kissimmee. There's a bunch more, I probably could've given you a couple pages of this, of the agencies that are using Axon because they are pretty much the leader in body cameras at this point. What's covered in the contract? New Axon Body 3 cameras with an LTE connection, that's the cellphone connection that enables real-time features like GPS and live streaming. LTE fees are included in the contract. Redaction software, holster signal kits to activate body camera when removed from the holster, unlimited cloud storage. Technology assurance plan combines warranty coverage on body cameras with an automatic refresh of the units every two and a half years. So year one, when we sign the contract, we're getting new body cameras. Two and a half years later, we're getting the most up-to-dated body camera that Axon has. At year five in the contract, we get new body cameras again. Same with the TASERS, we get the new TASER right now, TASER 7. Two and a half years, if they have TASER 8, we're getting TASER 8. And then year five, we'll get a refresh on those also. Current body worn camera videos transferred to Evidence.com. All of our current Qtel body worn camera videos will be transferred to Evidence.com for easy access by officers in the future. This will free up the servers they are currently being stored on within IT. So they're gonna transfer all of our current body worn camera on our servers, current servers, into Evidence.com and will be managed in that platform from this point forward. New TASERS with the new features previously discussed, unlimited duty cartridges for all five years of the contract when used in the field. So if we discharge a TASER cartridge in the field, they're gonna replace that under the contract, we do not get charged for them. An average of six training cartridges per officer per year. We have to require to train on the TASERS every year. New holsters, three hook-and-loop training suits. What those are gonna do is, right now, we shoot at a stationary piece of cardboard. Those are actually suits that officers can wear. Most of our misses are due to moving targets and one of the probes or one of the prongs does not hit the intended target, it misses and therefore we don't have connectivity. This will allow us to practice in real-time scenarios. Five master instructor vouchers, five instructor school vouchers, unlimited cloud storage. The interview room cameras and the officer work area will have eight overt dome cameras, microphones for recording, and unlimited cloud storage. What's the cost? You saw it in your package. Axon operates in a five-year contract with their body cameras, just like the current five-year contract for TASERS. Current body camera contract expired in March of this year. Our TASER contract expires in June of 2022. And this is the perfect time to switch over. The new contract will bring our body cameras, TASERS, interview rooms, and booking area cameras under one platform that will store the data in a single, secure, safe, and easily accessed cloud storage application. The five-year contract cost is $1.37 million, a little bit over that, or $274,000 annually. Packaging these products together provides a discount of approximately $494,000 over the five-year period if we were to purchase each one of those items separately like we currently do. Puts all products on one platform with the latest technology and will make our processes related to video recordings more efficient. Additional products can be purchased for the contracted prices as the agency grows over the terms of the contract. So as we continue to grow as an agency, which we all know over the next five years, we are gonna grow significantly with the, with the city, we will get the contracted prices that we have right now, so if they raise our prices, we get the contract prices. And not only do we get the contract prices, but they'll be prorated for whatever the terms, remaining terms of the contract are. So the requested actions for tonight is authorize the mayor to sign the Sourcewell-Axon Piggyback contract. And in a few minutes, you'll have the budget amendment request through Resolution 2022-25 to fund the first year of the contract. Subsequent years will be budgeted by the Apopka Police Department. Questions? I tried to cover a lot of stuff as quick as I could for you.
Well, you know, when we spoke and just raising the level of service, not just to the community, but certainly for the safety of our law enforcement offices and the efficiency in the entire process with the Axon and Evidence.com is just, there's transparency, there's accessibility, and there's accountability. And that's what we want from our law enforcement offices and from the police department. So I realize the initial investment is, the cost is there, but over a period of time, it's something that we will, the technology's always changing, but we'll be able to stay with one company as it changes and it gets less, so it's cost-effective. So I already told you that I support anything that will certainly make our police department much better to serve our public and certainly for the police officers who are on patrol.
And Axon for years has been the leader in the body worn camera industry. And I suspect they will continue to do that, they invest a lot in there. If you wanna combine anything with the TASER, they're the only one that offers a TASER for law enforcement use. So we would have to go into the TASER contract if we didn't wanna use their cameras and then again, we'd be on two different platforms.
Mr. Smith?
Well, we all know that technology is constantly changing and we're already behind the eight ball. And so seeing that in this contract that they're going to keep us up to date and we won't be as far behind as we are currently, and we're providing officers with the best equipment possible in order to keep them safe and to provide transparency to our citizens. So I support the purchase.
Mr. Nesta?
Not much more I can say to echo both commissioners. I think this is long overdue, I'm glad it's here, technology is expensive, but it also can save lives both on the Leo's side and also on our citizen's side. So fully supportive of this, love it. Let's keep bringing technology to our field.
Okay. All right, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Not with close of the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the execution of a piggyback contract for the assigned term with Axum Enterprise, Inc. for the purchase of new body cameras, TASERS, and interview room cameras. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You can go home now. Vladimir?
Mr. Mayor, I was actually gonna wonder, can we move, because it's a first reading or a pull-over from last meeting, can we just get, jump to ordinance 2931, knock that one out and then we can get back to second readings?
Well, I promised her to get her out of here early because she lives all the way over in.
No problem, then let's just do it for the second one day, yeah, no problem.
Happy to, yes, accommodate you. So you're glad, Mary, you owe me two now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Resolution number 2022-25. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2021 and ending September 30, 2022, providing for budget amendment.
Vladimir Ortega, Finance Director, City of Apopka. Resolution number 2022-25. Chief McKinley make my job much easier today. This is City Council Agenda item referenced in today's meeting explained by Chief McKinley for the body worn cameras, TASERS, and interview room cameras and unlimited cloud storage and supporting software solution for five years. And this is just the cost for the first year, which is $274,177. And the request is to approve the recommended motion, Resolution 2022-25.
Any questions for Vladimir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not with close of the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-25. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now which, which one were you?
2931.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2931. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances in the City of Apopka by amending Chapter 2 Administration by creating Section 2-24, maintaining order decorum and count savings, providing for codification, providing separability, providing confidence, and providing.
Prior to the matter being discussed, this matter was tabled at the last meeting, so I need a motion to remove the item from the table to then begin the continuation of the first reading.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Michael, do you wanna?
The item back before you today, tonight, is ordinance 2931. At the request of Commissioner Banksen at the last meeting, the staff, your staff report for this meeting has a table which clearly enumerates the provisions that are in the existing Resolution 201616 and their equivalent in ordinance 2931. Perhaps it's best to try to clarify some of the information that's been out in the press, out on social media, to clarify what, some misunderstandings, some misinterpretations of what the effect of the ordinance is. I will go through the table and outline the existing provision in 201616, and it's carrying over to 2931. When there are, if there are changes reflected, your staff report did reflect in italics in the table that there are changes, what substantive changes are made between 201616, or I'll just call it Resolution 16 or 1616, and ordinance 2931. Section 1 of the resolution, provided for announcements that are to be made at the meeting. This portion of the resolution remains. A key important fact, the ordinance itself, by itself, does not repeal Resolution 1616. Those provisions that are in conflict between 1616 and the ordinance, the ordinance will supersede them. Resolution 1616 has certain policy and actual practical applications that will remain. So Section 1, which is the announcement, is a, the guidance for there to be the announcement in regards to the rules of decorum. This is not being carried over in the ordinance, it's not gonna be part of the code. I wanna clarify, because I know last time I used the term that we're codifying some of the terms that are in the resolution. What that means is that many of the substantive provisions in Resolution 1616 are going to be now in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka. That is what codification means, they will actually be part of the city code, easily referenced by code section number, by code chapter, and you can pull them up now on Unicode at home. That is what the codification of the language in Resolution 1616 means. So ordinance 2931 does not specifically enumerate the announcement as part of it. However, many of the items that are in Section 1 of the resolution carry over to the code, namely as reflected in Section 224B, 224C, 224F2C, and 224F2D. These are current, in the current resolution, and they will now be in the current code, namely language regarding only those individuals recognized by the mayor, the applicable presiding officer, are authorized to speak to the council or to the city board, to clarify and to correct what has been seen as misconceptions. This does not mean what, when a speaker is recognized by the mayor or the presiding officer, means one of two things. A card has been submitted, when the card is read, that person is recognized. Also, as has been done in every meeting, if during every public comment at an item to be discussed on the agenda, not public comment, comment for an item on the agenda, every single matter has the presiding officer stating, is there anyone wishing to comment on the matter before the agenda? Somebody gets up, that person is recognized. There is no unilateral discretion to not recognize someone or to refuse someone the ability to come and comment. That's not happening. Nobody's First Amendment rights are being taken away. That is what practically speaking is, being recognized by the presiding officer of the council, of the board. And again, these, this code applies not just to the city council, this applies to the other boards and committees of the city. Planning Commission is governed by this section as well. That's why the language to mayor and/or presiding officer is included throughout. The chair of the Planning Commission is the presiding officer. In the event the mayor is not present and the vice mayor is handling the meeting, the vice mayor becomes the presiding officer. And now my iPad screensaver kicked in. So language regarding, so what it means by, in the language, all other speech, remarks, or comments are unauthorized. What that means is, if you are not the person that is recognized speaking here at the podium and other, and there are cat calls from the and there are cat calls from the back, screams, those are not folks that have been called upon to provide the comments. That's the language. That doesn't mean that you come here and you're shut off. I mean, I want to clarify these things because I think things are snowballing and being blown out of proportion as to what this actually is. There are no substantive changes. Much of this language is being carried over from the resolution to the ordinance. So and the other portion, any persons attending any city meeting shall render inaudible any cellular phones, other mechanical electronic devices when the meeting is in session. That's in the resolution. That's just simple courtesy. I mean, we're now in 2022, so you don't have to say, please turn off your beepers. But turning off your cell phone, so in order to not disrupt a meeting with a loud ringtone. I mean, these are portions of our common courtesy. And again, when called to speak, comments shall be made from the podium or other reasonable accommodation by the mayor. Speakers shall identify themselves and state their address. If the speaker is representing a group, the group or organization should also be identified. This is in the resolution. This is what's being asked of every speaker who comes up, whether it's at public comment or whether it's commenting on an item on the agenda. Please state your name and your address. And many folks voluntarily then say, yes, I am here on behalf of this organization. Further, all comments shall be directed to the city council as a whole. Comments shall not be addressed to a single member of the city council or to city staff members. That's currently in the resolution. And a lot of this is because as the council, the council is the governing body of the city, and the council can only act on behalf of the city as a collegiate body, voting on the matter. An individual council member doesn't have the authority to act individually on behalf of the city or direct such a matter on behalf of the city. This is a collegiate body, and the actions must be taken in their entirety on the part of this board. And therefore, certain comments and certain actions are to be taken to, directed, addressed the entire body. It is the body that represents the city and acts as the city. Go forward to Section 2 of the resolution, which is the public request to address the council. These matters carry forward in ordinance 2931 in Section 224F2 and 224F2 sub C. This renders the language regarding to bringing items, if you're going to have certain aids to your presentation, in either public comment or comment to items on the agenda. A change that has been done from the first reading to now our continued first reading is after consulting with IT, the amount of time for prior submittal of documentation is now 24 hours instead of 48 hours. There's a practical aspect to certain video being submitted prior to it being presented here. Namely, for those folks watching at home, if you come in with a video card right before you're about to speak, that video cannot be properly transmitted via the streaming service. They may be able to see it but not hear it, they may be able to hear it but not see it. And then that creates a disservice to somebody watching via streaming. With prior submittal, it can be incorporated into the presentation, and now that is giving the public who is watching via streaming the opportunity to participate. Practically also, the added time is for folks who want to hand out certain materials, actual hard copies, the 24-hour prior notice enables the clerk to make the requisite number of copies, to distribute them, to have them in the packet, and to get them to the commissioners at least 24 hours prior to the meeting, so that you're not forced to read if somebody comes in and has a 20-page handout. I don't think you want it to be the first time you see this 20-page handout, right when they come up to this podium and see it, especially if it's something that perhaps you want to address or comment on if it's brought at public comment. Going to Section 3 of the resolution, which is again, a continuation, the submission of written statements or documentation or media. Again, this is again reiterated in the code under 224F2C. The language doesn't change. Substantively, it doesn't change. It already is in the resolution. It's now being put into the city code. Section 4 of the resolution addresses the public comment period. Section 4 of the resolution is split into two subsections. Public participation on issues not before the agenda and public participation on issues that are on the agenda. One of the things again to reiterate, public comment is not being eliminated. That portion of the city council meeting is remaining. It's being untouched. The public has the right to come and speak on matters not on the agenda. The rules to speak remain the same from the resolution to the ordinance. There's no substantive change, aside from please submit any materials you're going to use as part of your public comment 24 hours prior so that it could be placed on our system, one, checked for viruses just in case, but most importantly, so that it can be properly displayed and played via our streaming service, to continue a service to the public who's not here and not shortchange them because someone comes in right before they're about to speak wanting to play a video that the public at home will not be able to see or hear or both. Again, and the same will apply to public comment as to an item on the agenda. What should be curtailed is folks who come and want to speak at the public comment period on an item that's on the agenda. If you're here to speak on an issue that is on the agenda, your turn to speak is at the time that item is to be considered, not at the public comment period, when we're discussing items of general concern that are not already previously set on the agenda to be discussed. That is it. There's no guessing game. There's no, you either, if it's on the agenda, you speak during that item's portion of the council meeting. If it's not on the agenda, you speak at public comment. Going to section 5, which is the manner of addressing the city council. Substantively, this is not changing under ordinance 2931. It'll remain the same. Section 6, which is standards for decorum, the city council to be addressed as a whole. That section of the resolution is carried over into the code into ordinance 2931. There are no substantive changes. Section 6, subsection B, personal attacks and insults. This is in the resolution. This is not in the ordinance. This is an area where there has been a substantive change that is being done onto the ordinance, namely the resolution, which was what we're currently guiding under, gives the mayor the discretion to deem whether someone is conducting a personal attack or an insult. Under the ordinance, that is being removed. There is, the presiding officer does not have the unilateral discretion to determine whether somebody's comments or speech constitutes insult or personal attack. One of the changes that's being done from the resolution to the ordinance is that there is no regulation of the content of one's speech. What is being regulated is somebody's conduct and mirroring and echoing the language currently embodied in Florida statutes, which is willful interference or interruption of a public board meeting. That goes to conduct. So and also, the unilateral discretion of the mayor is being removed, consistent with other jurisdictions. In the event that there is what can be deemed and considered willful interruption or willful interference with this body acting, if the presiding officer does not act, any other council member is now empowered and authorized to bring forth a motion to call for the presiding officer to regulate the conduct. And the ordinance spells out, the person who is willfully interrupting is being, will be asked to please cease the conduct. If they refuse to do so, they will be directed to leave. If they further refuse to do so, now they've carried forward their conduct forward to the level that constitutes a violation of the state statute in which there is a willful interference with the government's business, which will then warrant removal and potential prosecution. That is a call for the state attorney's office to make. But there is no provision in the ordinance whatsoever in which the mayor can order a member of the public to be arrested. It doesn't exist. Further, in Section 6 of the resolution, there's also the questions directed to council. That language is again carried forward, that the members are to speak to this body collegiately because only this body as a whole can act. An individual on this body cannot act by themselves. Again, language, Section 6 sub D of the resolution, again, calls for disruptions in decorum. That, as I explained further, has now been further narrowed for the clarified, that is really a regulation on conduct and not the content of one's speech. The standards for decorum again in the resolution, Section 6 sub C, calling for warnings and removal, again, has now been clarified and codified, put in the ordinance, asking for first the warning, requesting that the individual cease the interrupting conduct. And if warnings are not heeded, then there is an authorization to remove the person from the meeting. If the person again refuses to be removed from the meeting and continues such willful conduct, they may be subject to violations of the state statute, which is the intentional and willful interruption and interference with a governing body's meeting. The time limitations in Section 7 of the resolution are carried over to ordinance 2931. There are no changes. City of Apopka provides the public four minutes to speak at public comment, at the public comment period, and for any item on the agenda. A point for clarification, it's not something that needs to be codified, but there may be some misperception. You get four minutes. That does not mean, it's one, two things. It does not mean that you only get four minutes total. It means that you get four minutes for that item. So a person can come up at public comment, they have four minutes to deliver a comment, a question, a statement relating to something that's not on the agenda, they go back and sit down, an item comes up for consideration, the presiding officer calls for any public comment, that person can come back up and gets four minutes to comment on that item. What you do not get is, you do not get four minutes to speak on an item in the public comment. You're Speaker A. Speaker C comes up and says something, and now you want to come up after Speaker C during public comment and say, well, I want another four minutes to answer this guy. Public comment is not Q and A. Public comment is provide your comment, you have four minutes, and that is the time that you're provided. City councils, at their meetings, meetings are deemed limited public forums under constitutional law, meaning the city may regulate speech based on time, reasonable time and time matter restrictions. It is not unfettered, it is not unlimited. There are, you may place reasonable limits because this is a limited public forum. And what the ordinance with the resolution and the ordinance itself carries is that the reasonable limits are four minutes to speak on an item, on any item. You can speak on multiple items, and you will get four minutes on each separate item. If you speak two minutes on item A, that doesn't mean you've got only two minutes to speak on item B. You get your four minutes on item A, you get your four minutes on item B. If you're someone who likes to comment on every item on the agenda, go have at it. You've got your four minutes. Nobody's being restricted. There's no limits, there's no time limit, you don't get one bite at the apple. You get one bite at the item, but you don't get one bite during the entire city council Section 8, which are the exemptions, this carries over under ordinance 2931. These are standard exceptions that carry over. These are also standard exceptions that are understood throughout multiple jurisdictions throughout the state. These exceptions are that the public comment is not provided for items that are deemed ministerial, meaning there's no public comment for approval of the minutes. There's no public comment for the period of time when the commissioners have their moment to have their comment and their reports. City administrator has their report, and the city attorney has their report. Namely, the reason why there's no comments there is because during your own public comment period, during your own comment period, there's no business being done by the city. There's no action to be done. That's why many times I have counseled this council not to have a motion, not have the action during your comment period, because that is your comment period. There is at that point really no official action being taken by the council. Same applies for the city attorney's report and the city administrator's report. Other exceptions, there's no public comment on items that are being brought forward on an emergency basis. While the city, I think in the past, at least while I've been here, we haven't had a case like this, but theoretically or hypothetically, if the city decides to act on an emergency order, establish a state of emergency for storm, for these are exigent circumstances, the statute permits, and there's no public comment during those actions when acting on an emergency basis. Another area where there's no public comment is if the city attorney calls for an executive session, which is a meeting outside of the sunshine, subject to Chapter 286 Florida statutes. These are meetings to discuss litigation strategies, to discuss matters relating to collective bargaining. Namely, a lot of it is litigation and negotiation strategies in which the state has carved out an exception for a meeting to be held outside of the sunshine. There are limited exceptions. These types of executive sessions are not open to the public. The public cannot sit in on them, and the public does not have the ability to comment during executive session. Legally, during executive sessions, the board, the council, meets with their attorney, with the management, and there's a court reporter present. The entire meeting is transcribed, and when the subject matter of the litigation that's being discussed at that executive session is finished, either a settlement is reached, a judgment is reached, that verbatim transcript by a certified court reporter is made public and becomes a public record in which the public can then examine the contents of that executive session. That is an express statutory exemption to the sunshine law, and there's no public comment for those. And then the other one is that public comment can be restricted if this board is meeting on an expressly quasi judicial basis. And this is an issue that is currently being, actually currently being debated by many of the legal departments of multiple jurisdictions throughout the state of Florida. We've just presently in the last two weeks have had a, most city attorneys and county attorneys have a listserv. We communicate via email, and there's been discussion as to the scope of public comment when discussing, when a matter is being discussed in a quasi judicial function, namely, that is really to protect the due process rights of the applicant and the subject of the quasi judicial proceeding. During a quasi judicial proceeding, the witnesses can be cross examined by either the applicant, if it's in, or the city. Public comment, if the city elects to accept public comment, one of the important things is then when then examining the appellate record of such a proceeding, a public comment does not constitute competent substantial evidence that can be used against the applicant. It is mainly public comment. One of the concerns is under a quasi judicial matter, if a member of the public comes to comment on their opinion, they're not being sworn in. It's not sworn testimony. Member of the public may or may not be cross examined by the council, by the city's legal counsel, or by the applicant, or the applicant's legal counsel. There are a lot of times where some cities will differentiate between those who are parties to the matter and members of the public, so that those that are parties or party witnesses will be properly sworn in, subject to cross examination. Those folks will not be subject to the four minute rule because they are not providing public comment, they're providing evidentiary testimony in a quasi judicial matter because when this council sits in a quasi judicial matter, you are sitting as the equivalent of a judge and not as a city council in deciding a matter. So those are the four exceptions that are in the current resolution and carry forward into the ordinance. There are no substantive changes. Section 9 discusses the discussion of the items on the agenda. And now, there is language in Section 9 of the resolution, which is that from time to time, the mayor or the administrator may place items on the agenda to introduce new items of business for which no formal action is yet required. items of business for which no formal action is yet required, or to seek preliminary policy guidance from the city council. There's no official action will be taken by the city council on discussion items, there's no public comment under this section of the agenda. This carries forward from those exemptions. That mainly comes up with from the comment period that each of you have at the end of our meetings to provide the reports. There's no official action being taken. There might be discussions, but because there's no official action being taken, there's no avenue for the public to comment on matters that are not subject to any official action. The last is section 10, which is workshops and governing workshops. Ordinance 2931 doesn't carry any specific regulations to that matter. That portion of the resolution will remain in effect and it will really govern how this body will address, how to do workshops. Now, the council can revise resolution 201616 to be a rulebook, to provide guidance or to provide, you know, enumerate specific rules that come from the authority that is granted under ordinance 2931. Kind of think of it as the statutory equivalent. Florida statutes provides, the statute, Florida administrative code are the rules that implement that which the legislature has deemed and would the executive, which is the governor and all of the agencies, implement. So there is the possibility, if you wish, to amend the resolution to create actual rules. That's where you can place, okay, we're going to impose a rule where we have to read this at the beginning of every meeting, or this is how we're going to govern our meeting, and these are the rules. And these are all based on the authority that is provided by the ordinance. So that hopefully will clarify the purpose of ordinance 2931, clarifying that many of the substantive provisions in resolution 1616 are carried over without any changes, and that those changes that have been done actually curtail some of the unilateral authority that the resolution provided and really brings authorities to this board as a whole to act in the event where things may get out of hand. There's no proper way for a code to actually try to enumerate, this is out of hand, this is not out of hand. And I don't want to quote right now, the name of the Supreme Court justice escapes me. When asked to define pornography, he says, I'll know it when I see it. But there's no longer unilateral discretion on the part of the mayor. There is now a specified conduct. If it rises to the level of willful interference and any one of the council members may act and then any final action is actually done by this board collegiately. So the way that, again, if there is a, perhaps the most practical example, we had this issue several months ago, there was an interaction during public comment period. It turned into a contentious Q and A. It continued and it was Commissioner Becker who tried to make a motion or try to move for some kind of action. Under the resolution, there was no actual provision to allow one commissioner to try to move the board to try, this council, to try to act on it. Now, that provision is there. If the presiding officer is not acting, a council member can come in by motion, move, and if the board votes, the council votes to take action, then that is the action of the council to direct that the offending conduct be addressed. And as I stated, the code specifically states, the person is first asked to stop. If they refuse to stop, they're asked to leave. If they refuse to leave, then they are escorted or removed. There are steps to be taken. This matter has been reviewed by our police department's legal council as well, and that the language has been tightened up in order to provide steps to both address the due process rights of the person who is actually trying to instigate or willfully trying to interrupt a meeting, as well as the ability and the authority of this board to conduct the government, to conduct the business of government efficiently and to have these meetings move efficiently and not delve into a state of chaos. And that is an ability of a city council, of any city council in the state of Florida, to regulate such business in order so that the public can see and benefit from the efficient operation of local government. If you have any specific questions, I am here to answer.
Mr. Nesta?
I appreciate you going through line by line on that one. I wrote down some of my kind of notes, what I don't specifically agree with or what I'm having problems with. I'm not going to list all of them, they're plentiful. I just feel, and I said it before, that this is redundancy. I feel like resolution 2616 is already in place and we're already not following that, nor do I agree with that anyways. So I just feel that this is a waste. And I feel additionally that if we, and I ran on this, if we had a workshop to discuss this as a commission and a board to say, where can we refine some of this, where can we work together, I think this would have been a lot more successful, because then we individually could have gone out to citizens and residents to really see what their concerns are and bring that back to a workshop. But the way this was presented and additionally presented, I feel that it's a disservice to the citizens.
Mr. Smith?
I've taken the time to read both the resolution and the ordinance that's being presented. From what I see, from what people perceive, that we were trying to prevent individuals from making public comment, this ordinance, nor does the resolution, do that. It still does not prohibit any individual from coming to make public comment or to address any issues that may be on the agenda. So I don't see any infringes upon freedom of speech in either the resolution or in the ordinance. We're still allowing them the four minutes to speak and they can speak on each one of the items that's on the agenda, so therefore they can still express whatever concerns that they may have. So I find no fault.
Mr. Bluskas?
Well, as you went line by line, the one thing that was common or the thing you kept repeating was you kept referring to the resolution and you kept saying the ordinance doesn't change anything on the resolution. And so why are we creating an ordinance on something that's already in existence? And I feel, because this is coming from actions from previous city council meetings with public comment, where there was a lot of passion. And I will tell you that I have been the subject of some of that in my first term. And it, you know, I think the mayor has the power of the gravel. He has the power, he's the strong mayor. He runs this meeting and I feel that he has the power to call point of order, to tell someone that they're out of order. And so I don't feel an ordinance is going to give us that power, because it's already in this resolution. So I don't see where this is changing anything. I just feel that we already have a resolution in place, we haven't been following it. The only thing I see with the ordinance is that it becomes part of the code for the city. And while you said that the resolution, you have said it over and over again, that is a document that is sort of, has a lot of leeway in it. And I want, I don't want the public to feel that if they come up and they're passionate or they're angry about something, that they have to be, that have to control that emotion.
Again, I want to clarify, one, I never inferred that there's any leeway in regards to the resolution. A resolution has the effect of law.
You have said to me before that the resolution doesn't have teeth.
No, I did not state that the resolution does not have teeth. What I stated was that there are certain, the main impetus is that the resolution is not easily accessible to the public, because it's not codified, it's not part of the city's code. Resolutions are standalone documents, they're not within the code. They are, they reflect official action in the city council, so they do have the effect of law. But resolutions are not ordinances. By codifying it, and by codifying it, I mean it becomes part of the code of ordinances, it is readily available to the public, the public can readily see the requirements and the regulations and what will govern what comes to, what constitutes the rules of council meetings and other committee meetings of the city and have it clarified. The other thing, the ordinance, you state that yes, under the resolution, the mayor has the gavel and has the authority. What I intended to clear, what I wanted to present for clarification is changing, there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents folks from being passionate. You can be passionate in your speech, but there's a difference between passionate speech and willfully interrupting and interfering with a city council meeting. You can come up here and be passionate. There's no authority in the ordinance to stop that person from being passionate and speaking. Under the resolution, the language is stating that the mayor has the sole discretion to determine whether someone is being abusive. That is no longer in the ordinance. The ordinance simply governs that if you willfully interfere. Willful interference is, I'm, as an example.
Give me an example.
I'm a speaker who's sitting here, speaking at public comment. Willful interference is a person in the back screaming and yelling, that guy's a liar, don't listen to him, and causing interference, not being here on the podium, but being out in the gallery. That is willful interference. Somebody speaking at the podium and being passionate, that's not willful interference. That's being part of the council meeting. Now, someone who speaks at the podium then goes back and begins to yell, to interrupt. That's the conduct that the ordinance seeks to regulate. The ordinance does not seek to regulate what someone is saying here at the podium, unless someone is on the podium and making violent threats. Because constitutionally, you do not have the right to yell fire in a crowded theater. But again, like I stated, it's one of those, you kind of know it when you see it. But the attempt of the ordinance is not to regulate the content of one's speech, whether it be passionate, whether you're strident about something. There's no authority in the ordinance for this council to try to stop someone from being passionate. If one of you, if a member of the council tries to make a motion to stop someone from being passionate, I'll be the first one on that seat to state, you don't have that authority. You do have the authority to stop a willful interruption of a meeting if someone's in the gallery screaming, yelling, I mean, the extremes, throwing things and causing something, causing a disruption that'll interfere with your official business. And that's what the ordinance seeks to regulate, is the conduct. And that conduct is content neutral. Trying to give a unilateral authority to deem whether somebody's speech constitutes abusive, it treads in an area where you're looking at whether the content of their speech and regulating the content, that's a gray area, which I would like to avoid and limit the regulation to the conduct of somebody. And that conduct doesn't mean someone at the podium, unless their conduct at the podium raises to the level where it could be deemed interfering with the business of the council. And that's one of the clarifications that I wanted to place in the ordinance and have it spelled out clearly for the public, it's in the code, easily accessible, online, so that you know. But substantively speaking, again, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and misrepresentation out there. You can come up and speak, there's nothing stopping anyone from speaking, but you can't willfully interfere or try to disrupt this city from acting. Folks can be passionate, but if we're trying to conduct the meeting and we have a large group that chains themselves to the front of the dais and doesn't allow this city council to move forward, the council has the right to state, well, these folks are intentionally interfering or willfully interfering with the business of government. And they can be warned, they can be asked to leave, and if they continue, so that this council cannot act, cannot go forward on any of the other items on the agenda, and therefore providing a disservice to the folks who are here, the public, applicants, you should have, you must have the right to conduct orderly business for the benefit of the entire public and not have one member, through their conduct, not their speech, through their conduct, interfere with the efficient workings of local government.
So you had said, you mentioned that there could have been amendments, or there can be amendments put to resolution 201616.
You can amend the resolution and then have it stated. Again, the question is, do you want to put it on your website? But as of right now, this resolution, it's not on our website. We would have to provide it in such a format, make sure that the format is proper. While putting it in the code, it's in the code of ordinances, it has the same effect of law as a resolution, but it's readily available to the public, so that if somebody asks, why do I have to give my address? Well, the matter has been presented, has been discussed, and has been voted upon, it's part of the code, that a speaker gives their name and their address for the record, and therefore it's in the code and it's clear. And then therefore, folks also now have prior notice and have constructive notice that it's in the code and here's what's required in order to speak before the council. It's not restricting anyone from speaking, but again, because local governments have the right, have the ability to place reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on speech, the rules for being recognized, for submitting comment cards, for getting up if asked to provide comment, comment and providing their name and record, those are reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, which under the constitution are permissible, because a city council meeting is a limited public forum.
Any other questions? Mr. Bluskas?
No, I'm gonna wait for the public comment.
Okay.
David Rocker?
Well, good evening. You caught me off guard, I didn't know I was gonna be the first one. I have been coming to meetings a lot here, and I know I have four minutes. I came with the A A triple C on a lot of things that we had interest in within our neighborhood, and I participate a lot, because that's my nature. But one thing I don't understand about us, and I'm talking about all of us, we have intertwined with each other a long time and we know each other. Some of us have been to school with each other, we were raised together and other things, but we still can't seem to get along. I have a problem with that. You know, some of the nature of things is happening, and you should be able to sit down and, especially at council meeting, talk about it. The right to freedom of speech allows people to express themselves without government interference or either regulations. The attorney just got up and talked for a while. Some of the things he said tonight was not said the first time. I don't understand what he's trying to change or do. But one thing, one thing, what if we did a petition where you guys would stop doing invocation and a pledge of allegiance to the flag? What would happen then? At the end of the presentation, said justice for all, all right? It seemed that you're trying to do a smokescreen, all right, and threaten people by wanting to get up and talk. Once you do those things, they don't want to say anything. If you have, well, true, you have a strong mayor, he can stop some of the things, but you have four minutes, four minutes to talk, all right? You should be able to say anything you want to. We elect you, you didn't elect us, but it doesn't seem that way is working. That has a change. It's called respect, I understand that. But when you get up to talk, you have a right. It's a right that you can say what you want to, do what you want to, and then have it said and done. If your four minutes is up in the end, you can just say thank you and walk away. But- But, given our information, if people are looking at it on Zoom or whatever, they are for sure, they would not have that 20 piece of paper that they needed at that time. You can request and have it mailed to you or emailed to you, it doesn't matter by that time, but you have the knowledge about it. All right? If you came to the meeting personally, then you'll be able to get that piece of mail. All right? All that rhetoric and stuff that the attorney is talking about, I totally disagree. Totally. All right? You have the right, you have that right to speak. All right? That's in our Constitution. You have a right to speak. So if you don't like what's going on, maybe I think you need to resign and get somebody else in your place. Thank you. Leroy Bell, AA C, citizen of Apocca. First of all, I knew, how you doing tonight? I knew it was gonna be a song and dance tonight. Everything that I spoke on, it was spoke in the public comment. It wasn't on the agenda. I did take my seat when we had an interaction with Commissioner Bankston. If you go back and watch the tape, I was asked a question. I was taking my seat, and I was asked a question. And I came back to answer the commissioner. I thought that was respectful. And, also, it was stated, you was correct, Commissioner. The city attorney did say that the codification would put teeth into 2006, or 16, or whatever that was. Another song and a dance. I, and, and yes, it, it is, some speech is prohibited. And I think it was 1932, if I'm correct, it was Oliver Wendell Holmes, Associate Justice, is the one that coined the phrase, "Clear and praise, or clear and present danger." That's the speech that the attorney is talking about, that you can't yell out "fire" in a theater. But I beg to differ. What if it was a fire in the theater? Wouldn't you want somebody to yell that out? Wouldn't you want somebody to yell it out? And the reason that people come and confront the city council is because, if we had a newspaper like, uh, uh, the Apocca chief, that will report the missteps of this administration, like Eddie Poirier, you know him, the Apocca mole, or the Apocca council case guy, if you would just be upfront with the citizen, you wouldn't have nobody coming up speaking We had Commissioner Becker this particular night that was in question. He called upon a order. Once he called upon a order, I ceased and sat down. Commissioner Bankston is the one that asked a question, and I was told if anybody asks you a question, it's respectful to give an answer. And whilst we're codifying stuff, when we, when, when the city council do something that is illegal, I think that the city attorney should address it and let them know that it's illegal. Because on that night, Commissioner Bankston committed, admitted to his campaign during that time did something illegal. If you go back and listen to the tape, he said, "Well, sir, didn't you say you F'd my son up? You didn't know that he was recording you. And in the state of Florida, you have consent laws. Can't nobody record you unless you give them their consent." And with that, I'll take my seat and ask you to codify that.
I had a whole lot of stuff I was gonna initially say, and after hearing everything, I always like to keep things simple. I submitted to you Broward County, Harrisonville, and Allen Park examples, what kind of went, I thought, in plain English. You gotta be an attorney to look at, when you take a look at the old, the resolution and the ordinance, you gotta be attorney to interpret it. People need to understand that we're here to address issues. You start attacking people, then we have to draw the line somewhere. And I learned a long time ago that what I look at, and after discussing what I felt were attacks at this meeting with other homeowners in our area, they said, "That wasn't an attack." So that was through my eyes. What I saw as a personal attack was through my eyes. Someone said, "You're discriminating." Well, if, if, if you, if, if it fits you, you're wearing it, and you're gonna be offended by it. If you're not, it's, no one likes to be called out. And I think that if we just have something civil, you talk about issues, you talk about concerns, "I don't like this, I don't like that," that's fine. But when you start going, "Commissioner, Mayor," I, I get, that, that affects me, and I don't think that's appropriate. For others, that's different, and we all have. If someone said, "A backpack," in our backpacks of life experience, how we view things is on that backpack. I just think we need to, we had to have civil, civil correspondence, civil communication. We should not be, yes, you get excited about things. I raised my voice a couple times. That's, there's nothing wrong with that. But don't be calling people out. I don't think there's a place for it here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Mary Leveron, 519 Birch Court. Think a few of the things that were said by the attorney may render some of my comments now invalid, but I will still make them. I come before you tonight regarding ordinance number 2931, regarding decorum at council meetings. Before I address the ordinance, I'd like to provide some history regarding the public participation policy that this ordinance seeks to replace. Superseat. Codify. As some of you may know, I'm a former City of Apocca employee, and I drafted Resolution 2016-16. Six years ago, there was no adopted policy regarding public speaking, and in fact, the public comment portion of the city council meetings occurred at the very end of the meeting. Folks who showed up to speak about an Eagle Scout fundraiser, or to invite commissioners to a special event at the VFW, or who wanted to complain about a pothole, or flooding, or any other number of issues, were relegated to wait to the very end of the meeting, oftentimes many hours, as we all know, we're still here. Rather than haphazardly change the order of the meeting, we decided to address public speaking policy as a whole. And at the time, our city clerk put out a request to all the surrounding cities, and we received 13 policies in total, from cities like Oviedo, Winter Springs, and Winter Park. From those policies, we created a resolution that was duly adopted, and it, it worked to accomplish, and apparently, I hear tonight that it still works to accomplish the things that we set to have it accomplish, and that is to streamline and allow the public come to speak to you in an open public comment section prior to you get to the meat of the meeting. We also allow young people who have an early bedtime to be able to speak. We don't have any of those tonight, but we had those many times before. Athletes, Cub Scouts, you name it. So, before I get to the rest of what I wanted to, to, to address tonight, I wanted to go back to Resolution 2016-16. As it was originally presented, it was a resolution, we had typically, when you adopt a resolution, one reading. We had to do two, because I was required to make some substantive changes. And I'm gonna read from it. Additionally, out of respect for all speakers, members of the audience are asked to refrain from exhibiting unruly behavior. I had to strike the following, such as applause, audible conversations, booing, harassing remarks, or other audience participation, and that's where it ends, the rest of this was still included, during or at the conclusion of any presentation. We are now seeking to codify unauthorized speech, remarks, comments, comments, what is that? What's unauthorized speech? Stomping of feet, whistles, yells, similar actions or demonstrations constitute an interruption to public meetings and are prohibited. So, I wanted to at least address that piece. What we sought to remove, what we were directed to remove the first go around, you guys want to codify. Put it in your code of ordinances. It's not a policy. That is city's law. I come before you tonight not to insist that you retain a policy that doesn't suit the needs and desires of this council. I believe each council should be able to adopt its own rules of decorum. What works for one collegiate body doesn't necessarily work for another. Instead, I'm asking you to consider two crucial items of concern with the proposed ordinance. First, that it is an ordinance. When I received 13 policies from surrounding cities in 2016, every single one of them was a resolution. They were all resolutions. By adopting the policy as a resolution, and policy should be adopted as resolutions, it gives each successive council the ability to easily amend or adopt its own policies with one single public hearing, no requirement to advertise, and no drawn-out political theater. If adopted as an ordinance, any future city council seeking to change, amend, or repeal the rules for public speaking, or public decorum in this case, would expend legal fees, assuming the city attorney were not a staff attorney, and the cost of advertising, as well as be required to hold two public hearings. So you guys get to go through this a couple more times. Not that this hasn't been painful enough, from what I understand. Moreover, if public speaking rules are codified and so are, each time the city fails to follow its own public speaking rules, breaks its own law. Second, Section 22-24G3.
Need to wrap it up.
What's that?
Need to wrap it up. You're a minute over already.
States in part, "Any person who disturbs a city council meeting in violation of Section 871.01 Florida statutes is subject to arrest by law enforcement officers present." Mayor's, subject to arrest. Inclusion of this language has a chilling effect on speech and is openly hostile and threatening to the citizens of Apocca wishing to address city council, especially uncontested matters of public concern. The job of an elected official is not an easy one. It requires you to hear the concerns of your constituents and sometimes accept criticism in a public forum. In closing, I implore you as a council to reject the proposed ordinance and remove any and all references to arrest from the proposed language should you choose to keep it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Commissioner Sylvester Hall, 3091 Rolling Hills Lane, Apocca, Florida. I just want to talk about basic courtesy, basic common sense. And when we talking about freedom of speech, I don't think we have to get all that deep into it, because when I look at, I was on a nice cruise celebrating my 37th anniversary with my beautiful wife, and when I get home, I hear that we got an ordinance coming out, 2931, talking about the freedom of speech. And I'm glad a lot of things was cleared up, because it was disheartening to hear that. But I, I say this, when the council as a whole, when we bring things forward to the, to the community, I ask myself, "Why was the change needed?" Why was the change needed? What went wrong that we needed to have a change? And that's the simple question that I ask myself. Now, when we was going, when we was going back and forth about the minutes, somebody actually said, "We need," somebody gave the order to stop the minutes from being our normal process. Mr. Rodriguez said he didn't, so who did? Who said stop? And why did we stop? So when things like this happen, and we look at, you guys talk just like with kids, we see what's going on, but nobody fessed up to who stopped it. So I'm asking myself, I'm sitting back there saying, "Well, who stopped it? Why?" Nobody wanted to fess up to it. So when you urinate on us and telling us, telling us it's raining, that's what I have a problem with. And we need to stop that. So when we talk about the first amendment, first, freedom of speech, what most people fail to realize, the power that you have, every citizen, you have that power, your voice and your vote is power. Your voice and your vote is power. And when any elected official try to take that away from you, that should raise a red flag. So many of our veterans have died to give us that voice and our vote. When anybody try to take that away from you, it should raise a red flag. And that's when you get a lot of people who get disheartened with politics. "I don't care about politics, they can do what they want to do, they gonna lie, they gonna tell you all this." They do that because we don't exercise our voice and our vote. We don't come and hold accountability. And that's what we're trying to do here. That's what I have pledged from the beginning of this year. I have been to every city council meeting other than one, I just miss cruising with my wife. But people have to speak up, and they have to speak out, and that voice should never be suppressed. A great captain told me on the ship, he said, "Look," I was in charge of the material ratings for the, for the ship. He said, "Look, the condition of my ship, I want to know, whether it's good or bad, I want to know." Because any captain who can't stand to hear the truth about their ship will find himself sinking with the ship. Any governing body who can't stand to hear the truth about what's going on, on in our community will find disaster. And that's not serving the people. And so, when you look at people getting turned off, I ask myself, "Why did 28,000 registered voters didn't come out and vote at the last mayor election?" It's because this kind of chaos, this kind of misleading, deception. And so, I'm gonna simply say that I've always been saying, principle matters, procedures matters, integrity matters, leadership matters, responsibility matters, accountability matters, morals matters, matters, laws matters, ethics matters, and character matters. So when you vote on this-
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
-you will show your character as a whole. Thank you.
I'll give my name, I swear. Kim Bukai, 6500 Swain Road, Apocca. I'm still confused. I've reviewed proposed ordinance 2931, and have marked up my concerns on a copy that I'm providing for the record. I gave plenty to Susan, if she wants to pass them out to you now, she could do that. The problem is that the language, the actual words of what the ordinance say, simply don't agree with what Attorney Rodriguez has told you that they say. So I sure hope everybody's reading these words for themselves. That is the point here. Also included in your packet is my op-ed piece, Decorum, or Will Democracy Die on Our Watch? That was published online in the Apocca Voice this week. It is an open letter to the residents of Apocca, which you all are. I'm entering it in on record as it expresses my opinion, and you guys can read it later, if you haven't already read it, sounds like some of you have read it. My stated call to action was to inspire public input on this matter. I believe that it is our duty, as we the people, to tell everyone here that we expect better from all of you, whether our elected officials, city management, senior staff, support staff, and even us, the pesky, annoying citizens, that we must all do better. We're in this together, and it's our job to get this right. We're creating law here. I'm pleased that a couple of people had the good sense to tap on the brakes and take it more careful and critical- a more careful and critical look at new Section 2-24 before it comes law. To put it simply with all due respect, this proposed ordinance needs to be completely reworked if you put it into law. Words are important. They matter. Lawyers should know that. We can all read for ourselves. Let's look at what these, these words really say. And here's a few highlights. I'm going to focus on item F, which starts on page one at line 50 and goes through page two at line 40. That's all under Section F, which is supposed to be about speaking on items not on the agenda. It's totally confusing that subsections of Section F talk about speaking on all items that come before the board, including items that weren't on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. That is a recipe for disaster. If you guys can bring, I'm sorry, if the, any council can bring up anything at any time for action, and it doesn't have to be on the agenda for action, for, um, public comment, that's a problem. And you can look at this specifically. Look at subparagraph two, and I'll read it to you. How am I doing on time? Okay, I'm gonna run short. So I'm gonna skip ahead to this sentence. "In addition, there shall be an opportunity at a meeting for members of the public to comment on items of city business that could come before the city council for action but are not on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting." This is under F, people. You gotta look at the way these, the order of these items reads. So please, take a careful look at this. It's a mess. I want you to look at F2A. I want you to look at F2B. I want you to look at F2C, which is really convoluted because it doesn't even say we can present photos or PowerPoint, which is a problem. So anyway, I think you get the idea. Somebody needs to do a better job on this becomes, before it becomes the law of the land in these here parts. I respectfully ask this body, the entire city council, to agree unanimously to put this matter on pause until the wording is greatly improved. If resources are needed, hire outside counsel, somebody who's an expert on this. Don't approve this, not the way it's written. I urge you, everyone, everyone, to do better. Thank you.
I know. I come from a unique position of knowing what it's gonna be like to be on that side of the dial, so I'll make it quick. You know, I mean, really, it is concerning what the, what the, what the timing, what's the driver of the timing of this. I don't see what's transpired over the last, you know, six months that would drive to codifying this. If it's all about awareness, we just talked about in the public comment section that this should have been in a lead-in packet. I mean, there's no, there's no complications on a word document, a full ordinance being published for, for public inspection. All of that's leading to this confusion, frustration, things being misinterpreted on social media, people in the business community that are trying to do progress, constructive things in our city having to waste an hour, hour and a half of their time going over this, this garbage. But I, I would like to, just factually speaking, just talk about the state law, right? So, you know, the attorney said that no one had the authority besides the mayor to do a point of order and appeal to the board chair if rules are being not followed. That's inaccurate. I mean, the, the chapter that he's representing, 871, in terms of disturbing meetings, we all have the ability to do a point of order, appeal to the chair, motion to have the speaker that's causing that disruption either vacated from the premises or to cease speaking. That has nothing to do with the resolution, has nothing to do with the language that you're trying to pass today. Chapter 286, that public meetings, reasonable opportunity to be heard, Section 2, the last sentence basically states, "The opportunity to be heard is subject to, to rules and policies adopted by the board or commission as provided in subsection four." Subsection four reads, "Rules or policies of a board or commission which govern the opportunity to be heard are limited to those that (a) provide guidelines regarding the amount of time an individual has to address the board of commission," currently four minutes, that's not up for change. B says, "Prescribed procedures for allowing representatives of groups or factions on a proposition to address the board or commission rather than all members of such groups or factions at meetings in which a large number or individuals wish to be heard." Not really applicable here, not what we're discussing. Section C, "Prescribed procedures or forms for an individual to use in order to inform the board or commission of a desire to be heard, to indicate his or her support, opposition, or neutrality on a proposition, and to indicate his or her designation of a representative to speak for him or her, or his or her group on a proposition he or she so chooses." So that would be within the purview of what you can set as a rule or procedure. Last one there, it's, uh, Section D, designate a specified period of time for public comment. To Ms. Loverens, uh, period before, back in 2016, it was at the end of the meeting. Now it's at the beginning of the meeting. Nothing in there does it talk about inability to address certain members of council. In fact, if you go with that one clause within the codification of the ordinance, it says you can't address a single member of council. Do you all not want compliments if you do something good in the community? Because that's what it means. Doesn't specify positive or negative. Says you can't address a member of this council. You all were elected because you wanted to represent people in good times and in bad. We've all sat up there and been criticized fairly, unfairly. It's not my opinion. People can sit there and say, you know, you had this done to you last meeting, Commissioner Nesta, but you took it. And you probably gleaned some information from that exchange that made you better as a representative sitting in that seat. You all should have the maturity to be able to do that, to be able to handle it, and you shouldn't be scared about what anybody at this lectern wants to say to you about how you're doing your job performance. Thank you.
I'm still here.
Okay, that's it. Michael, do you want to respond to?
I guess again, for further clarification, I mean, I respect the opinions of the public. They provided their comments. And to again reiterate, there is nothing in the ordinance that prevents anyone from coming up to this podium and addressing the council. It's not there. It doesn't exist. Further, I, if, if there was one comment that did trouble me was defense of the resolution because it allows you to make amendments without it being advertised to the public. Advocating ease to not inform the public of a change to rules that'll, that'll affect public speaking, as opposed to an ordinance which requires advertising and two public hearings to discuss. Here's where we're, we're here. We're here at first reading. We're gonna be back at, at second reading. I just tried to formulate that, I don't think the intent was, hey, stick to the resolution because, guys, it's easier to amend because you don't have to advertise that you're gonna amend the resolution. I don't know if that was the intent of the speaker, but I want to make it clarify that there is nothing, the biggest substantive change from the resolution to the ordinance is that in the resolution and the language that was mainly there is, I'll get the right language, that was of concern, currently, under Section 6, subsection D of Resolution 201616, the mayor has the right to find a violation of this subsection in the event a person's conduct or speech is, by way of example and not limitation, duplicative, irrelevant, redundant, constitutes a display of abusive behavior, or is otherwise causing substantial disruption. That is deleted from the ordinance. I don't know how much clearer I can express that the ordinance removes the mayor's discretion from determining a violation of the resolution based on a speaker's content of his speech. That is not in the ordinance. The ordinance does not regulate the content of an authorized speaker. And an authorized speaker is someone who fills out a card or is recognized by the presiding officer to come and speak at this podium. Someone who is speaking out of turn for the sole purpose, and again, the language is deliberate when it comes to willful interruption. That is the standard that's set under the statute. And that goes to conduct, not content. So with the ordinance, there is nothing that gives either the mayor nor anyone on this council the ability to determine that the resolution or the ordinance is violated because what somebody said as an authorized speaker on this podium constitutes the language in the resolution. Duplicative, irrelevant, redundant, constitutes a display of abusive behavior or is otherwise causing substantial disruption. That's out. Somebody can speak, speak their mind. We had speakers today, they spoke their mind. There's no authority in the ordinance for any member of this council to stop the clock, turn off the microphone, and tell them to sit because what they spoke as an authorized speaker was duplicative. Under the resolution, the presiding officer has the authority to tell someone to sit down because they've repeated themselves? Because what they're saying has nothing to do with the subject? That is in the current resolution. That is not in the ordinance. Yet however, the, the narrative that was presented is, we're chilling people's speech. We're not, we're regulating what they're saying. The language is, if your four minutes are up, you sit. However, if the conduct becomes such that it is disruptive to a meeting, then this council can act to regulate that conduct. Again, it's, it's, and, and one of the other comments that was stating, I guess, um, there is no right or authority of this council to place something on the agenda without notice and without it popping in the agenda. That's just legally incorrect. That lang-
No, no.
That- The language is, somebody can come to speak at public comment on an item that's not on the agenda, that may potentially become an item that may be on the agenda. If somebody comes to speak on an issue by way of example, remember the public came to speak on issues regarding flooding? It's not on the agenda. It could potentially be on a future agenda to be addressed. Because it may be on a future agenda does not preclude someone from speaking at public comment to raise it to, in order, in order to raise the issue so that it could be on a future agenda. To carry it forth that this, that folks are prohibited from speaking because an item may be placed on a gen-, legally, there, nothing can be placed on the agenda at the date of the hearing. Agenda is published, that is what is to be discussed. To carry it to that example is carrying it to the absurdity that, um, you can't speak on something that a council member will place on the agenda the day of. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. So I, I, I can't address issues that are theoretical and, and are not consistent with our, our code nor with Florida statutes. So as I've stated, one of the impetus is, the code allows us to provide the, the rules of decorum, having it codified so that it is readily available for the public to view. And they are there, they're codified, they're in law. There is nothing to stop this council from amending as time progresses. If there's an issue, it comes forward and be amended. That amendment will be advertised, the public will become aware of the, the amendment. It'll be discussed in a first reading and a second reading. It is not an amendment to a resolution that is not advertised, so someone has to follow the agenda, see if there's an agenda, another, a new resolution. It'll be advertised, following the rules of advertising for an ordinance. This is the clearest example of being as transparent as possible, placing it in the code and, and having it the effect. The resolution and an ordinance have the same effect of law. One's not simpler than the other. What, putting it on the ordinance is it provides it, it puts it clear, concise, and the, the language is fairly clear. And the main regulations, again, are not to the content of the speaker's speech. It is merely regulating, if there's any regulation, conduct which rises to the level of willful interruption of the government's business. That is a, that is a vastly different standard than the content of speech, which, under the current resolution, can be regulated if somebody is repetitive, irrelevant. That's there now. If this ordinance is passed, that's gone. And somebody can come up here and repeat, somebody can come every single council meeting and say the same exact thing. We've seen it happen. There's nothing in this ordinance that stops them from doing that. There's nothing in this ordinance that gives you, the council, the authority to tell them, we already heard this 30 times, sit down. You have no right to say that. You have no right to regulate that. Only when it becomes, rises to the level of conduct outside of this podium, that's, that's the calling question. That is something that is not clear in the resolution and now is clear in the ordinance, that the regulation is tightened to regulate conduct and not the content of the speech. So if you, if you want further clarification, again, I, I am here, but that is, that is the, the gist of the ordinance. And I've presented side by side the language. A lot of the language that's in the resolution is being carried verbatim into the ordinance. There is just some portions that I think needed to be revised in order to, to what I believe withstand constitutional muster when it comes to issues of speech. And that, that was the one that was most concerning to me was that that, there was an issue with what constituted really the regulation, the regulation of somebody's, the content of their speech. And those, that content regulation has been deleted, expressly deleted. I, I don't know how much clearer I can be.
Any last, I think we beat this one.
Well, I, I just want to say again.
Sure.
The, the biggest complaint that I've heard is that we're infringing upon the rights of people to speak, and that is not happening. And, and even in previous city council meetings, I, I've had residents to say, why do y'all allow those people to keep coming to the city council meeting? Well, it's their right. Well, it's a part of our job. So I have no problem. Hold me accountable. And whatever criticism comes, it's a part of the job. And so I have no problem with that. And so I tell them, don't worry about it, it's part of the job. And so we are not prohibiting people from saying whatever they have to say to come here to address this council. And so that, that's been the biggest issue that I've heard, and I don't see where this is doing that. It's not stopping anybody from saying anything that they want to say when they come to this council, as long as they fill out a card and go before the podium.
I think, I think the clearest illustration is, somebody who's speaking here at this podium, who's been authorized to speak either by filling out a card or has been recognized by the mayor to come during public comment, that person is exercising their First Amendment rights. What the ordinance seeks to regulate is the other party out there screaming, drowning out that person, drowning out. Now, that person has in effect infringed on this person's First Amendment right to address the council and has, and has broken the chain between the resident's right to speak to council and council's ability to listen because disruptive behavior has now interfered with this person's free exercise of their right to speak and what they are speaking of, regardless of the conduct. Or if someone's up here speaking their mind and someone disagrees with them, and they go out and catcalls and, and those issues. Now, that language is clear. That is behavior, it's content neutral, and that's the conduct that it seeks to regulate. When you're up here speaking, there's nothing to stop you from saying whatever you want as long as you're not actually stating something that does go beyond the pale of your First Amendment right to speak, which is clearly threatening language, um, which can be constituted as a, as a, as a physical threat, which will put someone in imminent, you know, imminent fear of actually being threatened. And that's, that's a language. It's important to note, yes, there is the First Amendment right of speech. It's important to note, yes, there is the First Amendment right to speech. It's very important to note that your freedom, the right to speech is not absolute. And there are reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. As long as those restrictions are reasonable, it complies with the First Amendment. Unfortunately, speech is not absolute.
And you know, and then some people think that this ordinance is to give the mayor power, but you've taken the power away from the mayor in this ordinance.
Correct.
So, I don't know.
And here's where it's not content neutral. Both Resolution 2616 and this ordinance are not content neutral in the fact that a resident can't specifically come up and address one member up here. That's not content neutral. So the resolution is already limiting your First Amendment, so is the ordinance. So it's not content neutral.
At this point, this is why we're here at first reading to discuss. There's nothing to stop you from moving forward a motion directing staff to amend that. It's not etched in stone.
It's 10 o'clock, let's, I move to, I would prefer to have a workshop. I want to have an open dialogue with you guys to really figure out what your expectations are, how you guys feel it's going to be best moving forward. The way that it is right now, I think, is problematic.
I want to make it important that the resolution does already contain that language. That's also language that's consistent throughout other jurisdictions.
I understand.
When it comes, so that's, I mean, again, I'm trying to, I'm not going to, I'm not directly advocating for the passage or adoption of this ordinance, but I am advocating for the efficient movement of government. And at this point, this is why we're here. The board is here now to discuss if you have a motion or if you wish to amend that language, here, we're here right now, taking up the time of the taxpayers for another workshop to reiterate and rediscover what's already being discussed now. We're here now. This is first reading. We have second reading, again, before it's finally adopted. If there, staff would have no problem if you direct, you wish to remove the language in regards to direct comment, either positive or negative, direct comment to discuss, to direct a member of the board, that can be amended. And if you direct staff and there's, you get the votes on the council to direct staff to change that at second reading, it'll be changed. There's nothing stopping us from, I'm not going to sit here and go, now I'm not going to change it. That's, if that is the concern, and the board agrees with that language being removed, it can be amended. There's nothing to, that's a, that's why the matter's being presented to you at first reading and opening to amend it, and you're amending it in the open to the public.
I'd like to hear your thoughts on that a little bit as well.
Okay, I got, what we need to understand, I mean, there's been a lot of things on social media and all about what this does or doesn't do. It does four things different than the resolution, okay? One is it codifies it into a quote of ordinances. Two, it reduces from 48 hours to 24 hours. Somebody wants to bring up a video or a PowerPoint, so it gives more transparency. Three, it gives the council members the ability to stop somebody from getting out of hand. Let's just say it's a supporter of mine and he doesn't like you, it gives you the ability to stop it without me, maybe I want, maybe I'm mad at you, and I let them just go on and just attack you. You could then stop that person from committing, you know, something that's outside the scope of what public comment should be. Three, it does not regulate. If anything, it frees up speech. So if you want to talk about free speech, what this does, if somebody wants to come every meeting, like Rod Olson to talk about the backflow preventers, he can come every meeting and talk about backflow preventers. Under the current resolution, he can't do that. If I want to shut him down next week, next commission meeting, I can shut him down. And so it's, the other thing is that resolution, there's no public, you don't have a public notice, whereas we've got with an ordinance, there's two hearings and a public notice. So this has got the belts and suspenders that the resolution doesn't have, as well as giving you council members more authority, giving the public more authority by giving us instead of 48 hour, 24 hour, and it also gives the ability, or we can't regulate the speech that you bring forward. So this does more for the public than what the current resolution does. And if we want to change the ordinance, we come back, we could, obviously we can change it now at the second, the second, you know, hearing, second reading.
If you want me to strike.
That piece, if that's what you're hung up on.
That section, and the council agrees to strike that, then it'll be stricken and presented at second reading with that section stricken. You have the ability, like we did with the backyard chickens ordinance, it's going to come later, that was changed from first to second reading at the direction of this council. This ordinance can, the same can be done.
But to say this is more restrictive is just not accurate. I mean, there's no way you can say that we're doing less for the public and their ability to come before the council and speak, period.
I would say, the only rebuttal to that, I would just say it's equally restrictive. And it gives us more power, it doesn't give the residents more power. I think it's more, it's equally restrictive.
No, it gives the public more ability because we don't limit what you say. Overlimiting is how you say it.
No, it's, again, let me clarify, let me clarify, let me clarify that. Okay, no.
And here we are, that's exactly what...
Let me clarify that. The content of a speaker's speech is not regulated.
It is if they're directing to one minute over.
Right, and if that is removed, we can remove that. That is not a problem. However, what is regulated is when the speaker leaves this podium, goes back there, and becomes disruptive.
And that's already in the...
So, and that's the key, is the difference is it removes that provision which states, which gives the mayor the authority to determine if somebody is repetitive, insulting, intimidating, that's gone. And if the council elects and goes that way and agrees and will remove the provision that a member at public comment is to address the board entirely and not single out a member, that could be further, that could be removed. And that's, and if you get the council to agree with you, that will be removed. And therefore, the only regulation is the attempt to stop the willful interruption of a council meeting. The language that's in this code is, most of it was modeled after the city of Boynton Beach. Also, Volusia County has the same codification, city of Orlando has their rules of decorum codified as well. We're not alone.
Okay, I think we're at a point where...
Can you just explain, one that I'm kind of on the fence with is Section 2-24G, number three. Any person who at a city council or board meeting willfully interrupts or disturbs the city council or board meeting in violation of Section 871.1 Florida statutes is subject to arrest by those law enforcement officers present.
You read Section G in its entirety and do not take just G3 by itself out of content, out of context. G1 is the first step. A person who is willfully interrupting the meeting, you read G1. If the individual fails to cease the offending conduct and continues interrupting the meeting, the individual shall leave the meeting room as so directed by the mayor or applicable presiding officer, and such person shall be barred from further attendance for the remainder of the meeting. Step one. Please, example, please leave. No. Step two. In the case the mayor, applicable proceeding officer, that's the one where if they refuse to act or if the mayor refuses as the presiding officer to direct the offending party as to their conduct, not somebody up here, unless their conduct rises to the level of an imminent threat of violence. Then, once they've been warned, they've been asked, first, G actually goes, first you have the, you have a warning. If you do not heed the warning, you're asked to leave. If you refuse to leave, you've been warned, you've been asked to leave, now two times you've ignored direction. Now, because you've gone twice, that rises to the level of now you're intentionally interfering with the meeting because you've ignored a warning and a request to leave. So if somebody starts yelling, clapping, the ordinance as written doesn't authorize that person to immediately be arrested for violation of the statute. It's, you have to read G in its entirety and not take 3 by itself out of context.
But 3 specifically states, no action by the mayor or applicable presiding officers required for a law enforcement officer to enforce the statute. So as much as you're saying it needs to go in order, it doesn't say that.
In statute as written, I mean, that's, again, that violation is a call for the state attorney's office to determine. Also, if, giving example, I mean, if you make a statute or any law, you kill it with too much specific, it becomes unenforceable. If theoretically, if a major disturbance occurs in the back, the, an officer can address a major, I mean, theoretically, what if we have, if you have, I mean, extreme examples, but a fight breaks out in the back of the chambers, that person can be removed or arrested, and it doesn't take a warning, a direction to leave, that then does authorize the sergeant-at-arms to take action if it's deemed as such. I mean, you don't want to take one example of the extreme as negating the entire effect when reading it in the context of the way the ordinance is written.
But to Commissioner Velasquez's point, and not to your point, this doesn't state, should one happen and then they don't listen, we're going to two, and should two happen, we're going to three. The way this is written is, I don't think it's getting the point across that hopefully you guys are wanting. I don't even want to edit this right now like that. Yeah, there's too much in this that I want to change and I think it's inappropriate to not have Commissioner Banks in here as well to comment on it as well. So I would motion to table it.
Well, I don't, what we can do is we can pass on first reading and bring it back to the second reading, and if you don't like what you see, then you can, you could vote it down. You still got another, you got another bite at the apple.
There's too much opposition for it right now.
So what's the move from here then? What, I guess, what's the next step? It seems two to two, we don't have a, how do we move on? It's, I've been here a long time talking about this.
If we have a stalemate, the motion without an affirmative vote either way, either... At this point, without an affirmative vote either way, yes, the motion fails and the matter will not be brought back to second reading. If that is the case, any potential amendments you're seeking to this ordinance have no effect. We'll have to start from square one.
Well, I can make an amendment to the resolution that's already in place.
That would be, we would, it would come forward, an amended resolution would come forward, that resolution would not be, the hearing for that resolution will not be advertised.
But if the whole point is efficiency, then that's the most efficient way.
Efficiency, yes. I think transparency and notice to the public.
Sure.
That's a, that's...
I understand, I understand your points.
I don't want to, you know, it's double edged. I want to be efficient, and the public is clamoring for transparency, and then we're saying, yeah, you know, we can sneak, we can bring this in without it being fully advertised. So.
I understand.
So if you can't get there, then vote no, and that's, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I can't get there. So I would motion to deny this ordinance, reject this ordinance, 2931.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta to deny.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Velasquez and Nesta in the affirmative, those, nay? Nay?
Nay.
So Commissioner Smith and Mayor Nelson?
Well, the motion to deny fails, but, you know, an alternate motion to move because what we have is to strike it to deny, so therefore, that's negated. You don't, there is no, it's not denied because you didn't, you didn't pass a motion to deny See what I, see what I mean?
So we need a motion.
You didn't have enough votes to kill it.
But we don't have enough votes.
Right, but I don't have, I don't have a motion.
I asked it before, what, obviously, it's a stalemate, so what's the...
You moved, you moved to pass, and it fails to pass. Right now, it's failed to move forward. You don't have, you haven't killed it. But if I don't have a motion to move it forward, then it's, I mean, I don't think the negative, you got to flip it.
I'll fix it. I moved it with accept ordinance, 2931.
And move to second reading, that's...
And move to second reading.
I second that motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Mayor Nelson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay, all right. All right, let's take a five-minute break and we'll come right back. All right, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back. All right, next up, where's Susan? I need Susan. Come on, Susan. Michael, can you read ordinance number 2906 for...
Okay, 2906.
Where did you...
Ordinance 2906, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county commercial to commercial for certain real property, property, generally located north of US 441, south of Old Dixie Highway, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, owned by Vision Car Wash II LLC, comprising 0.23 acres, providing severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, uh, that's, that's fine. Trying to think, we don't have anybody from planning yet. Where's Jim Hitt? Jim out there? All right, Jim, are there any changes to the ordinance 2906, the small-scale future land use? Okay, no changes. Okay, anybody from public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2906. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2907.
Ordinance number 2907, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county C3 wholesale commercial district to MUD mixed-use downtown sub-district for certain real property located north of US 441, south of Old Dixie Highway, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, owned by Vision Car Wash II LLC, comprising 0.23 acres, providing severability and providing for an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes, sir.
No changes. Okay, anybody from public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2907.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, 2908.
Ordinance number 2908, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Kelly Park Road Property LLC, located south of Kelly Park Road and west of Chandler Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2908. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss the first two? 2906 and 07?
Yes.
I did.
2914.
Okay, ordinance number 2914, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional district to MMU KPI Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use, and assigning neighborhood and transition overlay districts for certain real property located south of Ondake Road and east of Brown Lake Road, comprising 205.07 acres more or less, and owned by Kelly Park Land Investments LLC, Galvin Land Service LLC, and Harris KP LLC, providing for directions to the community development director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes on this, but this is a three stepper, uh, three-step approval is the ordinance, um, the master plan, and then the development agreement itself. Three separate motions.
Okay. Okay, uh, look for a motion, uh, wait, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to, oh!
Oh, you do have a sheet in there, I'm sorry. Yes.
For the third and final time, Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka. I have some problems with this, and again, I spoke earlier, but on this topic months, weeks ago, but with all due respect, and with the understanding that the current provision is being corrected in the city charter, the city allowing this developer or any developer to circumvent the intent of this policy is not in the best interest, of the interests of the residents of Apopka. This prop, this park, the majority park other than two little strips, is the middle of 600 apartments. Who in their right mind is going to go through that complex to get to that park? To allow that exception seems ludicrous to me. And i- it's, it's comparable with two little strips on the outside, it's comparable to putting lipsticks on an alligator. It's still an alligator. If they want the density, then move the majority of the park space to the fringe of the development where other residents in Apopka can make use of it. If not, then deny it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else which should speak on this matter? Okay, not, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2914.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, the master plan, we need a motion to approve the master plan?
Yes.
So moved.
Anybody from the public which should speak on it? Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Approve the master plan?
So, okay.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, need a motion to approve the developers' agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up, ordinance number 2915.
Ordinance number 2915, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional district to KPI MMU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use zoning district, and transition overlay districts for certain real property located in the southwest corner of Golden Gem Road and Sadler Road, comprising 20.27 acres more or less, and owned by DWPM Ventures LLC, providing for directions to the community development director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
No changes.
No changes. Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on ordinance number 2915? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve? Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2916.
Ordinance number 2916, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, designating the future land use designation to commercial maximum 0.25 floor area ratio, for certain real property generally located on the southeast corner of Plymouth Sorento Road and Lester Road, owned by Vision Car Wash II LLC, comprising 2.05 acres more or less, comprising, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2916.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2917.
Ordinance number 2917, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county C3 wholesale commercial district to MUD mixed-use downtown sub-district for certain real property located north of US 441, south of Old Dixie Highway, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, providing, or owned by Vision Car Wash II LLC, comprising, comprising of 0.23, 2.3 acres...
I don't think that's the right one.
No, you're, you're...
No, that's not the right one. This is second reading for the daycare.
Yeah, 2917.
The ordinance is correct in the packet.
Incorrect in the packet?
No, it's correct in the packet.
Okay. An ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2917, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from PD Plan District, Plan Development District, to City CC Community Commercial District, for a portion of certain real property generally located on the southeast corner of Plymouth Sorento Road and Lester Road, owned by Lester Road Land Trust, comprising approximately 2.005 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
Sorry about that.
No changes.
Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2917.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number 2924.
Ordinance number 2924, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, granting the petition of G&amp;B Development Services LLC, establishing and naming the Kelly Park Community Development District pursuant to chapter 190 Florida statutes, describing its external boundaries, the functions and powers of the district, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the district board of supervisors, providing for severability clause and providing for an effective date.
This matter was tabled from the last meeting, so I need a motion to remove it from the table prior to discussing the matter.
Got a motion to remove it from the table?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And as for the ordinance, there have been no changes from first reading to second reading?
Okay, so no changes. All right, with that, uh, we have a motion, anybody from the public which should speak on ordinance number 2924? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2924.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2925.
Ordinance number, oh, that's the very one. Ordinance number 2925, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Apopka by amending part three, land development code, article three, zoning districts, section 3.3 residential base zoning districts, subsection 3.3.9 MHP mobile home park district, by creating single-family use standards, by amending part three, article four, use regulations, section 4.2 principal uses, subsection 4.2.2 principal use table by amending certain prohibited permitted uses and special exceptions, by amending part three, article five, development standards, section 5.2 landscaping and buffer standards, subsection 5.2.5 landscaping and buff, buffer standards, by creating single-family or two-family residential lot, trees standards, by amending part three, article five, section 5.3 tree protection standards, section 5.3.8 retention of specimen trees by creating replacement tree species list and tree planting strip widths, by amending part three, article five, section 5.10 signs, subsection 5.10.8 standards for specific sign types, by amending primary and secondary wall sign sizing, by amending part three, appendix A, mixed-use Kelly Park Interchange, MUKPI Form Base Code, chapter H, density, intensity, and open sta- space standards, table four, density, intensity, and open space standards, by amending part three, appendix A, chapter P, street standards, table 12, street standards by revising street standards, by amending part three, appendix A, chapter P, figure 63, street type F alley by revising dimensions, by adding part three, appendix A, chapter R, development bonuses and transfer of development rights by revising bonus standards, by amending part three, amen- appendix D, development design guidelines, section three, residential design standards, subsection 3.3, 3.2.1, single-family architecture by providing for maximum shed heights, by amending part three, appendix D, section three, subsection 3.6 residential landscaping by providing for certain landscaping standards, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and for an effective date.
No changes.
No changes. Okay, anybody here to speak on ordinance number 2925?
I'm Roger's back at seven West Main Street. Um, there was a couple things that kind of caught my eye when I was running through this packet. One was in regards to the trees, in regards to calculation that ranged one tree up to six trees. I think we should look to account the size of the lot, as well as what's going to be placed on the lot. And then you look at...
Wait, say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The size of the lot, so for example, the size of the lot ranged from, I believe, 5,000 square feet, had to require the one residential tree?
Right.
Um, but then you also had language in there that said that you had to provide street trees as well. So is it stating that the residential lot only has one tr, one tree for 5,000 square feet, or is it in addition to the street trees?
It's in addition to the street tree. We're still working on the street t, tree issue with utilities, though.
Okay.
We just haven't clarified that with engineering yet.
Okay, and then one of the other items that kind of caught my eye, um, and this is just because it's a trending factor now, um, artificial turf is stated in, in this code now that you do not allow that at all. So, or that you had to come to the city, get a permit or give permission to. So I guess, why would you negate a person the ability to, to use that material? And at this point, if I want to put a, put it, put it off in my backyard...
You can, you can do a putting green. What this is prohibiting you from doing is completing your, your lawn, your whole lawn.
Complete lawn.
But what if I want to do that?
Well, this will allow, this won't allow you to do that.
But why?
Because it doesn't, there's no percolation, I mean, it's not good for the environment.
There, yeah, well, there's some percolation, but there's, there's, there's no exchange for carbon, uh, carbon dioxide with, with fake lawn. And it also, it also allows for a cooler type of, uh, cooling effect when you have natural lawn versus, uh, plastic, basically.
Well, I guess I understand where you're coming from, I don't, I'm a hundred percent agree, but I'll take that. And then in regards to the sinus calculation, I saw that it pretty much did the interior height of the ceiling inside the building, as opposed to the height of the building itself.
Correct, yeah. It, because you, some, some developers can add a parapet, you know, can add a parapet that's twice as high as the building itself, and we, we look at the, the total, uh, the total square footage. It basically, it, it didn't, it clarified that you utilize a dimension, the only thing we added to clarify was that 15% so that you could have a maximum of 200 square feet for a, for a building.
Okay, so it's not going to take into account what type of roadway you might be running?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other thing as far as to the clarification of shed, I, I saw that it said a maximum of 15 feet in height, um, then it also referred it back to a, a table that referred it to 120 square feet. So if it's less than 20, 120 square feet, do you come to get a city permit or not?
This was just a clarification. We had at one place it said 15-foot height limit, this portion that we corrected simply said it could be as tall as the building adjac, the, the adjacent building. So if a single-family house was 35 feet tall, some people were interpreting that as saying their shed can be 35 feet tall. So we just said it's a 15-foot limit for your shed. That's a, that's a big shed.
Because I know, and I'm trying, I'm trying to go back to... Because I know, and I'm trying, I'm trying to go back to when I worked here, when I came in, somebody would have said, if you've got a rubber made shed, usually you want a building permit, and so we don't permit those. So how do you, how do you permit it now if you got regulation regarding it? Then it also states that it should look similar to the home. So how do you regulate the shed if you have all these, you know, if somebody goes to...
The only thing this changes is the height of the shed.
Okay.
And it matches what is in another section of the code. That's all this did.
All right.
Other than that, it's been the same since we adopted in 2019.
Okay. But I guess other than that, just the artificial turf was just something that really, I just didn't understand.
You put a, you put a, you put a, you know, putting green in the backyard.
But I'm just saying, right now, I'm a young guy, but if I'm 60 years old, I want to put artificial turf where I don't have to cut my yard.
We might change the code by then.
So I'm just, I'm just saying, it just, to me, it's being done currently in certain areas, I just want to...
The only one yard I know of, but...
Or turf technology.
We talked about it right now, but I'm saying other areas there.
From my understanding, it's... Yeah, if your next-door neighbor wanted to put in artificial turf in their front lawn, would you like that?
Well, it depends on how I look, because some of my neighbors' yard is terrible. So it just, to me, and sometimes I look at my yard as terrible, so it's just alternative. Because if you look at it, you're probably spending about $1,000 just watering grass, fertilizing, we got the, we got the, whatever they call that thing out there. So you got fertilizer issues going into, then you got the whole septic-to-sewer type deal. So there is a need and a benefit to having artificial services to reduce those particular issues that we're having in the environment. So there is, I think there's a need for specific reasons, but if you say it's not, but I just at least wanted to voice my opinion, I think it should be looked at to have the ability to do that. That's my opinion.
Well, I think it still provides that you can come get a special permit for it or use, which I know isn't the preference, but I don't see a huge demand right now for that. So...
Yeah, it even says unless approved by the city for specific uses. So if you came in and wanted to put in a putting green, I'd say, yeah, sure.
But I just don't want to have to come next. That's what I'm getting at. I think if you're in a community, it may address that, then you have that particular deed that restricts that, but I don't think it should be additional bureaucracy on top of it. That's what I'm getting at. So thank you.
Well, I think in addition to the fact that it's not the carbon exchange, but also it does limit percolation, and so then we may have to require you put in a retention pump to keep watering your own property.
All right, or not to divulge further, but if you want to know what artificial turf feels like in Florida, go to the Boombah Sports Facility out west, east of Lake Mary, and when you stand next to it in the summer heat, what it's like standing next to an open oven. You actually have to end up watering it more in order to keep it cool because during the summer, just from experience, the, it will melt the plastic off the bottom of your sneakers without proper cooling.
It did off my granddaughter's shoes. 185 degrees is the temperature at field level. No, my only question with 25 was, I was understanding that the 2914 glitch exception was supposed to be addressed in that, did I not hear that?
What'd you say again?
The aspect of allowing additional density for parkland, in particularly dealing with 2914, that has it in the middle of the park, because I thought that was one of the items you talked about, we're going to, that's going to be corrected.
Well, it's not going to, this, by taking that out, it does not allow the developments in the KPI to get bonus density for putting in parkland that is supposed to be public.
Okay, so that does address it then? I just wasn't, I didn't, I misheard.
Thank you, sorry.
We got you.
Anybody else? All right, close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2925.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up...
Mayor, before we go to the next item, I think Mr. Hitt raised the issue, and item number seven, which is ordinance 2916, the packet is all correct, but I think the actual heading of the ordinance that was read was not the correct one, so in an overabundance of caution, we need a motion to reconsider item seven so that we can read the correct heading and then adopt it properly.
So is there a motion to, I thought it was number eight.
I thought it was 2917.
2917 was the second one.
Yeah, that was when she was reading.
The first one was the one that I noted, it was 2916, and right near the end I heard car wash instead of what it should have been.
So I need a motion to reconsider.
Okay, we need a motion to reconsider ordinance number 2916.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, bring it back up?
Bring it back up now, just read the correct heading.
Okay.
Is it correct in our packet?
Yes, it is correct in the packet.
Yeah, it is. Ordinance 2916, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, designating the future land use designation to commercial maximum floor .25 floor area ratio for certain real property generally located on the southeast corner of Plymouth-Sorrento Road and Lester Road, owned by Lester Road, Lester Road Land Trust, comprising 2.005 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Excellent.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Now we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2916.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, ordinance number 2927.
Ordinance number 2927, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, relating to backyard chickens, amending Part III Land Development Code, Article IV Use Regulations, Section 4.2 Principal Uses, Subsection 4.2.3 Standards Specific to Principal Uses by establishing regulations allowing chickens to be kept on lots or parcels with single-family detached residences and mobile homes, amending Part III Article II Administration, Section 2.2 Summary Table of Development, review responsibilities to create a backyard chicken permit, amending Part III Article II Section 2.3 Advisory and Decision-Making Bodies and Persons to establish backyard chicken permits, amending Part III Article II Section 2.5 Application Specific Review Procedures and Decision Standards to Establish Backyard Chicken Permits, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and an effective date.
Good evening. The item, the only change was what was recommended at first reading, and your staff report did describe that the amendment was changed. We've changed the language, allowing a tenant to be also, to apply, to be able to apply for a permit subject to written consent of the property owner. Those changes, if you want to clarify for the record, they're found on page two, lines nine through 11, and page three, lines 37 through 40 of the ordinance. So just made, it was clarified that a permittee can include a tenant as well.
Any questions for Michael? Okay, anybody from the public which should speak? Come on.
Susan Fritchie, 1058 Lakeside Drive, I'd like to, again, as I did at first reading, make objections based on, from an environmental standpoint, from a health and safety standpoint, from a wildlife attractant standpoint, I've got concerns, and also from the standpoint of potential damage on our property values. The one thing that I'll ask tonight, if the commission, if the council chooses to pass this ordinance, I don't know what the effective date is, but I know it was suggested at the last meeting that the HOAs that, who currently have covenants that are silent on this topic, that they just change their covenants. It's not that easy, and it's oftentimes a costly and time-consuming task for the HOA attorneys to go through that whole process to change the covenants. So at the very least, I would ask that we have an opportunity, that this doesn't take effect right away, so that any HOA that wants to attempt to change their covenants have time to follow that process through. Thank you.
Michael, do you want to just, well, let's see, why don't we go ahead and get all the public comment first, and then we'll, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
Tony Philcox, live at 927 Crest Court in Apopka. I'm here to support this ordinance, and contrary to the neighbor who just spoke, I don't believe that there's a major issue about wildlife or anything else, or decrease of property value, there's no evidence to suggest that. Surrounding counties certainly do that, allow chickens in the backyard. This is an ongoing issue between Susan and my daughter, you saw her here earlier with her husband and, you know, two kids. They've trying to educate her on, educate them on sustainability, and also, you know, that's their pet chickens. So I think that it's a, it's a very important, I guess, education process for those kids. In addition to that, they have taken steps to go through the course that they need to to properly care for the chickens, and they've had, spent something like $600 for the coop to be built. I mean, there's a lot of things that they have done in preparation for this. And so I would say this, that, yeah, there would be trouble in the neighborhood if the HOA took steps to try to, you know, pass something like this. And of course, it would take time, and I think it would be unnecessarily time spent. So I'm in support of this ordinance, and I know other neighbors are in support of it. I know other communities have already done it, Orlando, Orange County. It's not something that is, you know, different anywhere else. So I would encourage the, Your Honor, the mayor, as well as commissioners, to pass this ordinance without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
The ordinance is effective upon adoption. Tying the effective date to potential HOAs, I mean, it really becomes open-ended, especially with the number of HOAs within the city. I mean, it would, you'd have to sit down and decide what is a proper effective date. That's your prerogative, it's not mine, nor staff's. But like, pursuant to Chapter 166, the ordinance is effective upon adoption.
Any other questions for Michael? Anybody else want to speak on this matter? All right. Any thoughts or look for a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion to adopt ordinance number 2927 by Commissioner Smith? Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2932.
Ordinance number 2932, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Apopka, Chapter II, Article VIII Code Enforcement by creating Division I Code Enforcement Special Magistrate, amending Chapter III, Article VIII by creating Division II Citation Procedure, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Michael?
Good evening. Ordinance 2932 has had a change between first and second reading. Upon consultation with both the Code Enforcement Division and the Police Department, what has now been presented for second reading, the, we have removed the option for a violator, someone who receives a citation, to appeal the citation to county court. Now it's all handled internally. So if you receive a citation, if you decide to challenge the citation, kind of like getting a, if you get a speeding ticket, you can go to court. Here, if you get a ticket, a code enforcement ticket, you have 30 days to file your appeal, and then you'll be placed on the next agenda in front of the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate. So we're keeping it all internal. Also important to note, just to try to get ahead of any potential misinterpretation or misinformation that goes out there, this ordinance authorizes an alternative enforcement mechanism, which is a citation process. Chapter 162 Florida statutes authorizes local governments to have an alternative citation procedure in addition to the standard code enforcement route through the hearings. What's important to note that upon adoption today, and this becomes effective, code enforcement officers are not going to be writing tickets tomorrow. The next step in this will be basically the implementation of the citation program. Legal department will sit down with the police department and with code enforcement in order to then create a schedule which will outline those sections of the code that will be subject to the citation program. That schedule will then have a list of, you know, this code qualifies as a X, for illustrative purposes, you know, this violation is $25, this violation's $100, this violation's $150. So to be clear, that will be presented to you by resolution, so we can review it at that point, sit down. These are the, these are the provisions of the code that both the police department and code enforcement have deemed are, can be subject to the alternate enforcement mechanism of a citation, and then we'll adopt it at that time. But they are not going to be writing tickets starting tomorrow.
Any questions for Michael?
I just have one, and I guess it's not a question, but it is. I know at one point we had mentioned that we were going to ask the code enforcement officers to inform the residents that there are grants available to assist them with some of these code violations. Do we know if that's being done?
I do not know. I don't know if there's something related to, I mean, it's, if there is, it's not going to be related to a citation program, if it's going to be related to another one, but I will, I will inquire with code enforcement.
Deputy Chief, can you take care of that for us? Yes. I don't, I don't think that that's...
I, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head of any state programs to...
Right, there was... Right, but because the public is not aware of the grants that are available through CRA to rectify some of these code violations, we had asked the code enforcement officers, when they go to write the violations or to cite them, if they would inform them, I thought we was going to come up with some kind of flyer that they can be presented so that they would know that there are funds available that could assist them in some of these violations that they may have.
But how long will that take? Jim, what's the time to get the funding? I don't know if you'll be able to, even if you gave them a flyer, the timing... They typically have to get three quotes for materials, and that's usually the hard thing. It's like comparing apples to apples, you know, if it's painting, and it takes five gallons to paint a house, and usually that's like probably, you know, five or six brushes, rollers, the, you know, we would pay for all that for the, through the CRA. It would prob, if that stuff came in, I can process the application probably within about three or four days. So... So you do have time, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's only in the CRA, keep in mind, this is for the whole city, so, but at least we could help them out in the CRA.
Correct.
And the one guy that we have now that we just hired is, that's, he's strictly CRA, right? Okay, so...
Yeah, so we can inform him of that, I think.
Okay. Makes sense, all right. And I've got paperwork for that that I can send over to him. Okay, cool.
It's a good idea.
All right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
Rogers back at 7 West Main Street. I just got, I just want to get clarification. So the citation, and I'm getting to a point that we had an issue with a resident parking their vehicles in our, that was running from us in the yard. So are you saying that they're going to get a citation, or are you sending a citation to the property owner, or is this to a person? I'm trying to figure out what exactly is this process.
Jason Keer, because it's a citation, you can actually cite, issue a citation to the actual violator. Because, as opposed to a code enforcement violation which is tied to the land, a citation is not. You know, it's, it's the, if I'm caught speeding in a rental car, I get the ticket, not Hertz. But if I, so, but if the car has a violation, Hertz gets cited, not me. So that's, so that would probably be, because it's personal to the person committing the violation, and it's tied to the property where the violation is being committed, but the citation provides that, it is a mechanism to really go after the actual person committing the citation. So this, again, we'll evaluate the code to see which provisions of the code are more applicable to enforcement by citation. I mean, sometimes it could be just as easy as overgrown lawns, or improper, you know, abandoned cars, or such, those things. I mean, but we'll, we'll sit down and study which ones... I mean, but we'll, we'll sit down and study which ones are the best ones, the easiest way to enforce them. And then, yes, they'll be tied to the individual. So if they fail to pay the, the citation, then it's the same as failing to pay, pay a parking ticket. Then, you know, you'll, you'll proceed for further enforcement there. Then it will, at that point, yes, it could go to the courts for failing to basically being condemned for not, for not paying a ticket. As opposed to it being a lien on the property.
Okay. Anybody else? Come on down.
Again, Sylvester Hall, 3911 Rolling Hills Lane. I'm just trying to get caught up to speed. As I say, I was cruising last, last City Council meeting. Now, when you say code enforcement citation program, shouldn't we already have one? Is this a new program? What are we establishing with this?
Chapter 162 authorizes local governments to adopt one. The city never adopted an additional citation program. So at this point, it's, it is a second, it's an alternative. We had a standard code enforcement program with a notice of violation, opportunity to correct the violation being heard before the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate. Failure to do so will operate a daily fine. Daily fines not still taken care of, that becomes a lien on the property. That's the standard code enforcement violation. This is an alternative, it hasn't been adopted till now. Code enforcement believes this may be an effective and efficient means to address certain violations that don't have to necessarily clog the docket of the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate.
Okay, I'm, I'm all rest, but here again, what I was speaking of earlier, we have a program already in place, why haven't it been enforced? One of the things that I'm looking at, we are talking about annexing South of Apopka. And the biggest thing is code violations that they're going to be faced with. And so I'm just bringing it to your light now. I'll do more research, but this is something that we should have already had in place, we should have been already been enforcing for years, not just something coming up right now.
We, we can, we just, this is just another way of doing it. It's speedier process, easier, doesn't gum up the system. So no, it's, we're not, we're just giving you two avenues to get, get it taken care of.
Well, that's where I'm, I'm missing the loop at. Because when we say code enforcement, to my knowledge, code enforcement has always been around.
It has, right. We're just, it's, it's the way we, we.
Code enforcement, it's an additional.
So we.
Code, code enforcement officers right now, the state allows for two different methods of enforcement. But in order to have to undertake the alternative, which is issuing a ticket, code enforcement officers now cannot issue a ticket. It's a, I mean, we'll have to, it's literally like a speeding ticket, like a parking ticket. They don't have that authority now. They have the authority to issue notices of violation, but that alternate, it just hasn't been adopted till now in order to allow them to issue tickets for certain violations. But they do have the authority today, right now, to, to go and issue notice of violations for other. It's a more immediate, a notice of violation requires 30 days to clean up, to clean the property before you get a hearing. This is, you see the violation, you write them a ticket, they either pay the fine or challenge the fine. As opposed to waiting an additional 30 days, another process. It's just, it's, it's another, it's another arrow to, to go after somebody.
And this is my final comment. This is my whole problem with everything. This is not rocket scientists. This should have been done initially. When you have a code, a code enforcement program, how are you going to have any quote unquote "teefing" if you can't issue a citation? How are people going to respond to you if you can't issue a citation? This should have been done when the program was first created. These are the type of things that frustrate me. This should have been done, we're bringing this to the, to the floor now. When that program came into existence, if you can't hold nobody accountable, why even have the program?
Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2932 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner.
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, second reading, I'm sorry.
Right, subject to amendments that were added, which.
Yes, got a motion by Commissioner Nesta and a second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2933.
Ordinance number 2933. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Apopka, Chapter 78 Utilities, Article Two, Water and Sewer Systems, by creating Division 1.5 Industrial and Commercial Pretreatment, Providing for codification, Providing for severability, Providing for conflicts, and Setting an Effective Date.
Mayor, this is, this, holding it over for a second reading. And I, on the sewer ordinance, there's no substantial changes to the ordinance.
You had one little.
I did have one, and you had, you had to bring that up. I didn't know you were going to catch that. Page 54 of, page 87 pages of the sewer ordinance, there was one little typo there that, that we, instead of using 7824 Code of Ordinances of City of Apopka, DEP recommends that we use a more stringent, which is 62-255-200 Florida Administrative Code. That's the only thing that's different, and it's just a little more stringent to be able to hold categorical users accountable.
Thank you there, Mr. Brooks. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2933.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
You kept me here all this time for that?
Yeah, yeah. Next up, ordinance number 2939.
Ordinance number 2939. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Seven, Fire Department, Division One, Generally, Generally, Section Two Dash 180, Fire Department Rates and Charges by Establishing Rules and Regulations for the Fire Department. By amending Chapter Two, Article Seven, Division One, by creating Section Two Dash 205.1 Plan Review Permits, by amending Chapter Two, Article Seven, Division One, by creating Section Two Dash 205.2 Fire Permits, by amending Chapter Two, Article Seven, Division One, by creating Section Two Dash 205.3 Reinspection Fees, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Good evening, ordinance 2939 before you establishes the fees and rate schedule, or the authority of the City Council to establish fees and rates for the Fire Department by resolution. Currently, the rates are in the code itself. This is part of that process of, of beginning to move the actual rates themselves from the code to resolutions in order to allow for the efficient amendment of the amounts as they, they come onboard. What has also been added, when reviewing other rules and regulations of fire departments throughout other municipalities, surrounding municipalities, we also created the authorization for the Fire Department to charge fees for inspection, reinspection, what were the other ones? It was inspections, reinspections, plan reviews, and permits. So the way this is going to be structured, this is the first reading, which we're removing the language that's there, and it's just now, now the language is just an authorization. This item will be brought forward for second reading. After second reading, the, an accompanying resolution with the adopted fee schedule for 2022, 23 will be presented to you for adoption. So it'll be seamless. Once this ordinance takes effect, the, the rates that are in the ordinance now will be deleted, but the rates will immediately take effect upon adoption of the, of the resolution at second reading, after second reading, I'm sorry. If you have any questions, I am here.
Any questions for Michael?
Just one. So this becomes a resolution, but will it be on the website?
The fee schedule, that will establish that, right. It'll, it'll be similar to our wastewater fees. Our, last year, we did the wastewater, we did our, we did our wastewater fees, and we did our water fees. We had four schedules that were adopted by resolution last year, and those are on the Utilities website. So these will, will also, will then be on the Fire Department's website or any other, other finance web, whichever, I'm going to defer to the departments and to IT as to which website it will go to, but they will be published on the website as the schedule of fees that need to be paid.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody from public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2939 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. City Council reports. Commissioner Velasquez?
Um, okay. Let me see. Well, I'm just going to kind of really give the attention to that we, Saturday sounds, we did with Motown, which was really a great turnout and a lot of fun. And at 11:15 tonight, it's, you know. That's it for me, that's all you're going to get today for me.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
I don't know if this is the, the time, I heard the attorney say that it's not going to make rules or laws, but I, I do think that we need to go ahead and do something in reference to the backlog that Mr. Olson continues to come and remind us and bring us to our attention, that our staff needs to take a look at that. And then in reference to the summary of the public comments, whatever direction needs to be done to make that happen, we need to look at that as well. And then lastly, we will be having Emancipation Day recognition on Friday here at City Hall on the steps, beginning at 6 o'clock. And so we invite the public to come out and join us on Friday at 6 o'clock for Emancipation Day in the state of Florida.
What?
PM.
PM. PM, please. 6 PM.
Yeah, all right. Commissioner Nesta?
So I'll, I'll get through my list real quick. Hope everyone had a great Mother's Day celebration. We also, a few of us attended the Best Foot Forward Program with the Police Department. I thought that was a really cool, fun program I learned about, making sure that everyone's safe and cautious when crossing crosswalks. Met with Habitat for Humanity last week, yeah, last week, and they have some really cool plans coming up this fiscal year. Their fiscal year starts, fiscal year starts July 1st. So they have some cool things in the works, and hoping we get to partner with them. We attended the Family Mental Health and Wellness Resource Event hosted at the John Bridges Center and organized by the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce. So great event, looking forward to that one next year. To echo Commissioner Smith, Emancipation Day being celebrated or observed on Friday the 20th at 6 PM. That morning at 6:30, we have sprouts opening, so that's exciting. Next week, we have the graduates.
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Is it Thursday?
I mean, Friday. Did you say, okay, I was saying Friday.
I mean, it's almost tomorrow, you're right, it's almost tomorrow, you're not wrong.
So Friday, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Next week, we have a Waukesha High School and Apopka High School graduation, so that's exciting. Wanted to bring your attention that I've had some, some residents bring to my attention that there's no infant or baby changing stations at the amphitheater restrooms and the female or male side. So we're working on that. Just to get an update, and, and I could be wrong here, the Apopka Annexation Workshop, was that ever in the talks? Is that coming?
We're, we're, we're going to try to get some information together, so we've got an intelligent discussion.
Sure, do we have like a tentative date that we're aiming towards?
Not, I'd like to get Edward back, he, and I'll, under the mayor's report, I'll.
Sure.
Yep, yep, yep.
Gotcha. Commissioner Smith, last week you spoke about affordable housing. Is there anything, I, I don't know, is there anything new that we can do with that? We kind of need a right now fix, and we need a future fix. And, and I didn't know if anybody's working on that, or if there's anything we can do about that.
Working, got a couple things we're.
Cool. And then also, there was a mention of Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Didn't know if we're jumping on that, any reference. And there were three, there was five pieces of that, people, programs, policies, partnerships. What was the fifth one?
Look at my notes. People, programs, projects, policies, and partnerships.
Projects is the one I'm missing. Okay, perfect, thank you, that's it.
All right.
Oh, Mayor, I did fail to mention, prior to coming to City Council meeting tonight, I did go to Apopka High School and issued a $1,000 scholarship to one of the graduates from Apopka High School, the 123 Scholarship. We did that tonight, and then my co-partner, John Cloring, along with two other teachers, also issued, gave a $1,000 scholarship.
How about that? That's awesome, that's awesome. Good enough. Under City Administrator's report, a couple things. One is Edward is back in the office, not looking to see everybody, but he's, he's out there, he's grinding away now. So he wanted to let, let everybody know that July 18th, 19th, and 20th will be our budget workshops. 18th will be public safety, so police, fire, and IT.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Public safety, IT.
The 19th will be public services. And the 20th will be everybody else.
What time?
I do not know the time. I should.
I wasn't sure either.
Probably at 5:30.
Yeah, I think it's 5:30. So we'll put it down as 5:30.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
5:30 PM, but they're not filed, they're not preceding council meetings, are they?
No.
Okay.
Um, Michael, anything, or you?
Oh, no, actually, the brief update, and I think when speaking with the code enforcement, they were shocked that this might actually be the first time this has ever occurred. But today, Circuit Court issued a final judgment of foreclosure for one of our code enforcement liens for the property located at 3902 Greenock Court. This one's in Rock Springs Ridge. So the court has set a foreclosure sale date of June 21st. And that, at that point, we'll see what happens at the online auction. But the, the final judgment, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, but I think we obtained a final judgment in the amount of $232,000. So the procedure now is it goes to an online auction, as if, if this is equivalent of a mortgage foreclosure. If somebody bids above the price of the, the foreclosure judgment, the city gets the amount of its judgment, which is $232,000, which covers the code enforcement lien, as well as our costs to bring the action, our attorney's fees in bringing the action, and any other costs that incurred by the city for that. And if it goes to a third party, then the property is sold, and someone else will have it to do as they please with it. If it is not sold at auction, the city will take title to the property. The property does not have a mortgage, so the city will take title to the property free and clear for the city to dispose of it as it wishes.
And what date is that again?
June 21st is the date of the foreclosure sale.
Is there a time, or just?
Usually these are early in the morning, and it's online. So we'll have to establish the right mechanism as to who's going to be the person on the computer pushing, pushing the buttons. It's, it's similar to, from my experience, it's similar to like watching an auction on eBay.
He said if it's sold for more than, we get our money. What happens if it sells for less than?
If it is sold for less than, we will still get the amount that it's sold for as part of our judgment. In theory, what you have is similar to a mortgage foreclosure, you would have then a deficiency. It's then the discretion of the city, whether they want to then go after and get a deficiency judgment. For all intents and purposes, we get something. We get a person in there who's going to clean up the property. I mean, the main goal of code enforcement is compliance, not profit. So whatever we get, we get, and that's just going to be a bonus. The key is hopefully we get somebody in there who's going to take title to the property, clean it up and maintain it. Now you're going to have a, a viable, attractive property, and you're going to have a neglectful owner who's been finally removed.
So have we taken ownership to this?
If, if no, if nobody bids.
So who currently has ownership?
The, the property owner is, it's a trust, Dudley Burrell Trust. They were defaulted, they never, they never filed a responsive pleading. They have been sent all the documentation, we have never received a, a single reply from them. The trustee actually, the address for the trust is in Kankakee, Illinois. So it's, it's a, it appears to be a complete absent landowner.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I'm out of the state, July the 14th through the 23rd. So is there any way we can adjust the budget meeting?
Who's out of state? You are?
Yes.
What dates again?
Anybody else got?
I wasn't going to say it, but the 20th, I'm going out of state, but I can, I can work mine differently than you.
Well, I mean, is there any other weeks in July? What about the, the week before then?
The week before is terrific for me.
Okay, everybody go, week before?
All right, let me, you guys are going to make me look at my calendar.
I'm glad I looked.
So the 11th, 12th, and 13th?
Oh, wait a minute.
I assume you're looking at your phone, right? Not a.
No, no, I don't do the phone, this is what I do. I'm a boomer. Okay, so what were those dates again?
11th, 12th, and 13th.
11th, 12th, and 13th of July.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Again, to note, if we have a physical quorum here in chambers, you can't appear electronically if able to. As long as we have a physical, as long as we have a physical quorum, any member can, who's not able to attend physically, can attend electronically.
I won't be able to do that either.
Okay. Just putting it out there.
So...
But how does that affect the staff? I mean, are they, will they be ready for the presentation? Because I think we'll be putting that burden...
We're gonna be putting that, we're, yeah, it's gonna be tight.
Yeah, that's just it, yeah. I don't wanna kind of, if they have a timeframe...
So we did the week after?
Yeah.
That'd be too late?
Then we start getting into the, to, or add the lower, whether, you know, we set the millage rate.
Yeah.
We gotta...
Yeah, because now, then you have a certain time period in order to send it to...
You don't think they'd be ready by 11, 12, and 13?
Let's try 11, 12, 13, and...
And reschedule council meeting then also for the 13th, just move everything up a week.
Yeah, because the 13th is a council meeting.
20th is a council meeting.
Yeah. Make it, make it be 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock, not 5:30. So it'll be 11th, 12th, 13th at 5 o'clock.
And so we're gonna reschedule the 20th council meeting to the 13th?
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we can put that up on the, on an agenda for the next council meeting to actually have a vote to reschedule the, that meeting.
Okay.
All right, so...
All right, all right. Last but not least, we got, we've got a couple things here going on.
Wait a minute, so, I'm sorry, let me just...
11, 12, 13.
So you're going to reschedule the 20th council meeting for the 13th?
Yes.
So that's, you see, that's where I have a problem, because he's, you're putting all, everything else, the way you have the schedule is...
Everything moves up a week, so it'll be 11, 12, 13.
I know. This is, for the 18th, he had Public Safety and IT, two departments. The 19th, he had Public Services, one department. 7/20, he had all departments. So now, if you change it to 11, 12, and 13, and then do the council meeting, so what do we have, two hours to do all the departments?
Well, we're just gonna have a council meeting on 20th.
Council meeting's gonna happen on the 20th too. Well, the rest of the departments, I think they're allotted, I mean, the legal department doesn't take that long to go through there, but most of the rest of the departments are not gonna be that complex and time consuming, as opposed to some of the other departments. I think that's the way it's spread out, based on the amount to be discussed.
Okay, so then, I don't know. Okay.
All right. Mayor's report. Well, first off, just some bad news is, we had a couple folks down at Public Safety, or Public Services tonight, and one of our garbage trucks blew up.
Oh, no.
And the next truck to it blew up, and the next truck to it blew up. So we lost three garbage trucks at about 5:30 tonight, and thanks to our, our fire department and all the trucks and every hose we had in the city, we were able to put it out before it got to, it could have gone right on down the line and got, knocked us all out. So Josh Robinson, who runs our sanitation department,'s already got one ordered from Tampa to replace one of them. He was scrambling, thought there was one somewhere around here that he could get, so if we can get two, we'll be, we can limp by, but, you know, we're, you know, a year back order on getting them. So anyway, we don't know what the cause was. We venture to say it's either, either the CNG gas leak, or, or something that, like a piece of paper or something that got onto the stack, the exhaust stack that smoldered and finally caught on fire, that, so we don't know yet. We'll guess they'll start, chief will start tomorrow really trying to analyze what happened. So anyway, just wanted to let everybody know, I mean, everything's, nobody was hurt, just lost three garbage trucks. Okay, next up, Mount Door Water Agreement. Just want to let you know, you know, we signed this agreement back in April of 2018 to give them some reclaimed water, you know, which we now have the big pond out there on Golden Jim. And under that agreement, we want to give them up to .5 million gallons per day, and fully implemented up to about 3 million gallons a day. Well, they had a pump go down within their, within the municipality, and they were, they were burning up yards because they didn't have any, any water to send to reclaim. So I asked our team to, you know, try to get something out. We weren't expecting, they were talking about next year as they wanted the water, and all of a sudden, they call us and need it immediately. Well, they had a couple things that weren't working between us and them, and, but we finally got everything, you know, up and, up and running, and we've given them about 250,000 gallons to date. So we are, we stuck, you know, our Public Services team jumped right out, you know, in front of this, this issue, and, and got them water when they, when they were desperditoed. So thanks to the team out there that, you know, were able to jump through hoops to make that happen. Saturday night sound concert series discussion, we're gonna, let me just, I want to throw this out really quickly. Going into next, next fall, we've got, the dilemma for us is we've got, right now, it's all free concerts. We had one that was, that was a paid event, which was the International Jazz Fest. So what we've gotta decide is, do we allow paid concerts to be, to be, that we would host them, but they would, they would be obviously ticketed? Or do we do, to let anybody come in and ticket? Do we maybe take two weeks for free concerts? So we've got four pretty, five pretty big ones that want to come. So, so the question, which we'll, we need to bring up next, next commission meeting, like to get a vote on it, because we need to let Dargan Watts, who is the guy who's, who's put all of our musical program together, he just needs to know what we want to do. Do we want to do, say, two weeks every month for free concerts? Do we want to just say, we need to get, if we wanted to just fill every weekend, every Saturday night, we'd probably need to give him at least eight, and he'd prefer 12 weeks notice that, hey, I've got an open week, we don't have a, we don't have a paid concert coming in. So kind of think how you want to do that, and just so you know that last year, our, we budgeted $195,000 for all, all Saturday sounds, including the Philharmonic. So think about how we want to, we want to structure that. Do we, you know, two weeks a month, free concerts, do we just say, we're gonna try to hold up until close as we can, and then bring in a free concert if we don't have somebody that wants to book the amphitheater? We've gotten a lot of positive buzz over the year that, that people now are starting to say, you know what, I want to have a concert out there. So I think it's, so if we want to have more paid venues, I think we can, we can get there. So just think about that.
So, now, throughout the year, I had said to then Brian Foreman, some suggestions of different musical groups that different people had gone to our Saturday sounds and said, hey, you know, we have this group that, you know, we feel that would fill this amphitheater. So who do we, I mean, now that Brian's gone, where does those suggestions go?
Well, obviously, it'll be, you know, our newest, you know, team, yeah. So Radley would be the point, and Carolyn has, kind of helps him with that, but, but we'll, we'll come back and, so just think about it, we just, you know, next council meeting, would love to go, you know, kind of, at least come up with a plan as how we want to move forward. Even though, you know, budget doesn't start until October 1st, I'd like, you know, I need to let Dargan Watts know, hey, here's kind of where the council wants us to take this. So just think about how we do that. Sprouts grand opening, everybody's 6:45 on Friday, and then...
Is it in the morning or in the afternoon? I mean...
Morning.
6:45?
Yep.
On Friday?
Yep.
We're gonna be back up here for Emancipation Day at 6 PM.
There you go. You know, just the prayer breakfast and noon service were great events. I mean, I couldn't have been more proud of, of the Christian Ministry Alliance and, you know, what they put on for us. And then last, but not least, we're looking for applicants for the planning commission. So if you got any thoughts on a planning commission person, would like to look at people that aren't, areas that aren't represented, would be, you know, we just don't want to get too, too geographically concentrated, so if you can, you know, and I'd be happy to get, Jim, why don't you send out the, send a map of where the commissioners, or the planning folks are currently, so you know, so you've got, oh yeah, this, and that would, that would be a great benefit. So with that, have a good morning, I guess.